Okay. So you want a public meeting to order?
I do nothing until we get to the minutes.
Okay, all right. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of Montclair Township's zoning board of investment. Now this meeting has been published in the Montclair Times and Star Letter as well as on the Montclair Township webpage. On the agenda for tonight's meeting, it's the Montclair Township webpage, those being posted outside of the Montclair Township municipal building. Notice has been given in accordance with the meeting plan. And this meeting will not be recorded live. It is being recorded in multiple formats and will be available afterwards on the Montclair Township YouTube channel. First item on the agenda is the minutes.
First item is the roll calls.
That's what I meant, I'm pulling the minutes. It's the roll call. Chair Harrison.
Here.
Vice Chair McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Church.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Sainden.
Here.
Mr. Vera.
Here.
Ms. Grant. That's it. I'd also like to introduce our new assistant planner, Zedan Kazni. Donna Kazni.
Zedan.
And Jonathan Drill is here tonight, on the Mr. Sullivan.
First, I'd like to welcome Donna to the board. We've seen a lot of you and glad to have you on board. First, we have the minutes of the June 5th meeting. I just have one change on page four, line thirty-six. It could be reasonable probability, not reasonable probably.
Line forty-six.
Thirty-six. Does anyone else have any changes to the minutes? Not to one line of the minutes in that's board?
Moves the minutes as presented.
Second, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? First application on the agenda, and please excuse me if I mispronounce your name, is that of Christina Sadar Kenabachi. For property at one eighty-nine Forest Street. This is an application for variance to be controlled. The second story addition is a two-family dwelling. The property is located in the R2 two-family town district and is designated in the tax act as line forty-six and block two thousand three hundred and three. Parents can go reflect this Montclair Post Act in three forty-seven. One side yard setbacks of less than the minimum permitted for both side property lines of the Montclair Post Act in three forty-seven. That's the highest proposed condition, it feeds the maximum permitted width. Our act is based with a notice in order. Need to swear your name and then you can...
Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're going to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Proceeding.
Can you speak up so that we can get to that?
Yeah, people are gonna have to speak loud tonight. I see microphones there, but I don't know if those are the ones. I see something on the table, so just speak loud.
They're all supposed to be working, but yes, people should speak loudly with things.
Last name?
It's Sadat, actually. S-A-D-A-T.
Ah, okay.
And then hyphen K-E-T-A-B-C-H-I. Topsheen.
Gotcha. Okay.
Proceed and tell us what you want to do and why you're doing it.
Okay, so what we're doing is a two-second, second floor addition into our home. Currently, our kids share a bedroom. And now they're getting a little bit older, we want to give them their own room. So what the addition is, is just add an extra space so everyone can have their own bedroom.
Let's imagine so that his...
Right. Are there questions from members of the board?
Can you talk a little bit about your property, the existing house, before the addition is done?
So it's actually a two-family home and we live on both floors. We used to rent out the top floor, but then when we had kids, we just took over the whole house and now we live on both floors. We're keeping it as a two-family home. Upstairs right now is just one bedroom. What we're adding is a second bedroom and a small office. And so the second floor is going to match where the first floor ends. Currently, the second floor ends about two-thirds of the way. And then the... So we're just kind of having both floors meet up, so they're the same. And the property itself, it has a front porch, it has a backyard, there's no driveway, there's no... And the houses are regular, so that's all we got to be able to be in each home.
And then besides the addition, are you planning to do anything else? Where is the construction?
No, just this.
Let's go around, see if the historical colleagues have any questions. I, you know, just a couple of questions. So the... First of all, with the size of the addition, how does that compare to houses to the left and to the right? Will this be considered a larger in terms of...
Some, the houses are all kind of all different sizes. Some of them go as far as our house will, because it currently is that length. We're not adding any additional length, we're just having the first and second floor match. So we're not actually changing the length of our property. Yeah, the homes kind of come and go, they're all different sizes.
Okay, so it's not actually extending?
No, the foundation is the same, but just the second floor is going out. So right now, there's a kitchen on the first floor and then this bedroom and small office are just going to be on top of that kitchen.
So with the, you said that you're really maintaining the design, basically a two-family. The second floor is incorporating it as part of your living space. So tell us about how you're going to be utilizing the kitchen on the second floor?
The kitchen will remain a kitchen. It's a very large kitchen for an apartment that size. In fact, our kitchen downstairs is smaller. So we will be keeping, two sides of the kitchen will remain exactly the same. And then the, it's the side that's the end of the house is where the bedrooms will be.
You said that the, part of your intent here is to create bedroom space for the children?
Right, we love Montclair and we don't want to move, but the housing market's crazy and we... It's just, we'd rather stay here in town and be able to expand on our home the way it is. We love our location and the school, then our kids are very happy here.
So where your, where your children have access to the kitchen facilities, so, etc.?
Yes. The same way they have access to the first floor. They're older now, they're, they're right there. Nine and seven, so they're fully capable of being around a kitchen.
Well, people, I'll go around.
Yeah, gotcha. So you're just building this addition off of what's on the first floor?
Yes.
Jan, just a quick question on the zoning number two. The sixteen feet three inches, is that... Other than it's decided, like the house, the width of the house is nineteen eleven feet. But is that why, like, is there a formulation that puts the sixteen by three?
Yeah, that's the, it's the existing width. So it's a pretty existing variance to be added because the addition maintains that width.
Gotcha.
That variance follows with the addition.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Simon, no questions.
Mr. Vera. Mr. Church.
Yeah, I have one question. You have two kitchens.
It's a two-family home, yes.
Are you gonna keep both kitchens?
Yes.
You're not, you have no intention of renting out the top?
Not at this time, no. But it'll be used for our family living there.
Why two kitchens?
We want to keep it a two-family home, so in the future, if we move or if the kids leave, go to college or go anywhere, we have that option still.
Ms. Grant, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
But Sarah's getting asked other questions. So just want to understand a little about the current back wall of the second floor. Based on how you have it open, that's basically being removed, correct? And how, how will the roof then be supported?
The back wall, how many?
If you're gonna say anything, you have to come up and be sworn in.
Okay, so that's my husband. What he's referring to is that that existing wall will be part of closets. If you see any interior...
He's asking about how the roof's gonna be supported.
Right, so that interior wall is still there. They're just gonna be cutting basically the door.
Okay, so the doors are there, but above the door, that remains?
Yes.
So, okay, so you're just cutting two doors?
Basically just cutting two doors and going out.
Okay, but really, three, one for the bath and then one for the office?
Well, the bath is already there.
And that door, okay, obviously the door's there. And you're keeping the same setbacks as the existing house?
Yes.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the public who either have questions, testimonies, statements? Anything at all you want to say about the application, this is your opportunity. Anything further?
No, that's it, but thank you very much.
I will start discussion with Mr. Church.
I just had that one question. I think that... The, I just had that one question, why you have two kitchens? I see the problems in that area of the expansion. And you have an opportunity here to put one expansion out the back. I really have no problem with that because it doesn't seem to depend on either neighbor. Nor doesn't violate the planning, zoning, zoning plan. So I would just want to hear the rest of my colleagues discuss any objections they may have, but I have no substantive objections.
Mr. Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm generally in favor of these applications. I think the proposed changes are within the existing, the existing setbacks.
Footprint.
Yeah, it's the existing footprint, so essentially it's not adding beyond the, what the first floor property, the first floor construction is generally.
Mr. Simon. I'm in favor, but I just thought of a question. Will the addition block any sunlight to your neighbors at all?
The house above us is larger. I don't know if you have a street view, but it's a kind of small apartment building.
Yeah.
This gentleman has one. One too. If anything, they block us.
Okay, so the neighbor to the south of you, I guess that's one eighty-seven.
And then the house to the right of us is pretty similar in size. Theirs is also, I think, three dwellings. So, yeah, this one is an apartment building. And then this one is, has three units.
But as far as the...
I don't believe it would block their sunlight, no.
Or does it end at the same location, at the same spot that your house does, in the backyard?
No, our house is further. There goes, theirs is higher and ours is further.
Hold it, but yours goes further back?
Yes.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I'm still there.
I'm in favor.
Yeah, I'm basically in favor of, I have a question on the primary bedroom, it's on the second floor at this.
Uh, the second floor.
It was on the second. Karen, please, please, more?
Um, no, currently there is a master bedroom on the second floor and that's our main bedroom. It will all be on the same floor.
Ms. Harris.
In favor.
Ms. Grant, you get to comment but not vote since you're last all for it. Stephanie, comment?
Um, no, I didn't.
I'm also in favor of the application, I think, of variances of the testimony based on the existing house having the same setbacks. I don't think picking anything worse. You know, this is a two-family town, I have to understand, both, like, they're wanting to expand for their needs, but also keeping it returning to two-family status. So I don't think there's a need for any conditions, so... So we want to take a motion to approve the application. Motion to approve the application as submitted?
Second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And random statement?
Thank you very much, everyone.
Next application is that of Monique Eliot, owner for property at seventy-five Lloyd Road. This is an application for variance, for proposed attached garage addition to the home. It's in the R0 downtown town district and is designated on attachment, that's a block six and block seven. Three hundred and thirty, variance of request for non-photograph exception, three forty-seven, dash forty-three D1, and if the minimum setback of fifty-one required from the front property line. And what's the point yard setback, forty-three point eight feet is proposed. Our act is in order and the notice in order.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Who's who?
I'm Eli, daughter, but hello.
I'm Eric Schultz, architect.
Okay, so two witnesses or one witness?
I'm gonna start with one.
I don't know what my role is, I was just told to be here.
Okay, why don't you sit at that table for now? Let me get you sworn in, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're gonna give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And nice and loud, I think you heard from the other people. Can you state your name or, and spell your name for the record?
Eric Schultz, E-R-I-K-S-C-H-U-L-T-Z.
And you're a registered architect in New Jersey, correct?
Yes. Is there a pointer?
You need a pointer? We can get one. We can just give you a shit.
You mean a pointer or do you need a laser thing?
If everyone has their materials, I can do it.
Yeah, they all, they all have their materials.
You need the, right, okay.
Why don't you start and if you end up needing to do that, what happens by then? All UCI's in the back.
Okay. So property seventy-five Lloyd Road is very close to Holberg Place. It is in a steep slope area. The variance that we're here, request is for a two-par addition to be set within the fifty-yard setbacks. Also, part of the work is, between the garage and the existing house, is an alteration to the existing mudroom to add an entrance canopy. Let's do it this way, the, we're looking at the photos.
And you just refer to the image number so everyone knows what you're talking about.
Image number two is the south end of the house. That is the, sort of the living area of the house with the arch windows, living room, family room. Image one on the north side, that is where the existing mudroom and the kitchen are, so that's sort of the service area. That's the area of work, you're looking at the image number one on photos.
The other thing you could do is you could go up to the board and use your hand and point.
Yeah, trying to figure out how to forward the slide.
Oh, I have to do that here? Want to go to the next slide?
See, that's a laser, that's a laser. Yes, you said you wanted to point there, give you a pointer.
Okay.
Is this the one you want here?
Uh, yes, okay, so on the upper right is the, back to the first one?
Then we go back to the first one?
Yes, please.
Image two. You gotta go back. He wants to talk about image two.
There it is.
There's the legs. If this is the lead.
Yes, thank you. So to the right is the south end, the living end of the house. To the left is the, the mud, existing mudroom. That is where the garage would attach to. You can forward to the next slide.
I don't know why.
Yeah, it'll get there.
All right.
There you go.
So you can see the bottom right is also the north end, showing the kitchen mudroom area. And it shows the slope, it's pretty aggressive at this end, to the point where the drop from the front of the house, the front wall to the back wall, is more than ten feet. That is where the proposed garage will be. Go to the next slide.
Tell which image you're looking at.
So you can see this is a Spanish colonial stucco house with clay tile. The main structure in the middle, as well as the two extensions on the north and south, both have low-sloped gable-end roofs. Next slide, please.
Next slide, the back to the beginning.
No, it's the...
Oh.
Now we're looking at the existing and proposed mudroom and garage. And to the right, the yellow rectangle shows the proposed garage footprint. What we're proposing is that the garage be an exact match, its depth for the existing extension to the north, the mudroom is, which is twenty-three feet. That leaves twenty-two feet interior depth for a garage, which is basically understood as a typical minimum for any size car. So to the left and the upper, upper side, you can see very small mudroom off the kitchen and then a landing and it's two stairs down to get to the rear yard. At the bottom, see the new garage, expanded mudroom. And then we have a new entrance to the mudroom with a door canopy, which allows access from the kitchen to the front yard, to the garage, and then to the back garden, easily flowing way. There's a, there's a red line across the garage and the mudroom, which shows that fifty-foot yard setback. That is the amount of garage space that's within the fifty-foot setback. But it is behind the average front yard setback, considering the neighboring houses. And if you were to go to the next, next slide. See the existing versus proposed site plans? You can see how the garage is six feet in front of the fifty-yard setback, but five feet behind the average front yard setback. Just a couple of notes on the site plan here that we are at the thirty-five percent maximum allowed impermeable coverage. We are proposing to remove four trees, but we are replacing, proposing to replace each four of those trees at the north end between the garage and the neighboring property. I know that the town prefers not to have the garage doors facing the front street, if at all possible. In this case, we did look at if we could put a single-family, or sorry, detached garage in the rear yard. But we determined that was impractical, given the slope. As I mentioned, it's more than ten-foot drop just within the twenty-three feet, between the front and the back. As well as it would put us well over the thirty-five percent impermeable and wipe out many more trees than just the four. The other idea of facing the garage doors towards the north neighbor also seemed impractical because it would mean not only going over thirty-five percent coverage, but building a twelve-foot retaining wall right up against the northern neighbor's property line. Go to the next slide. So there are some improvements to having the garage attached, I think. Where the mudroom or where the existing stairway is, there's a, shows up in the photos better, but there's a car charger, irrigation controls that will both get taken from the front elevation and buried inside the garage. The fraction recycling, which are now visible, would be within the garage and mudroom. As I mentioned, we're replacing four trees. One of the trees would be in front of the proposed window for the mudroom. In terms of changes to the front elevation, we have, right now, there's a primary entrance and a secondary entrance to the service stair. That's a little shed roof. That's, um... Next to the mudroom. That is gonna stay, but we are proposing to remove the arch opening that has been, was originally an open-air porch, sort of a service porch. That has been filled in with a paneling to, for the current mudroom. That will go away and get replaced by a new entrance canopy shown in the post, which is a hip roof, tile, tile hip roof with brackets. So the proposed elevation will have primary entrance with columns, secondary entrance with brackets under the door canopy, and then the service entrance will remain as the tertiary entrance. So the garage, the new roof of the garage will be an exact match for the one on the second floor above it. And you can see that in the next slide. The existing is to the left. Proposed is to the right. And what we're doing is the roof, slope, scale, depth of the eve, everything is an exact replica of the existing roof. The details, the roofie brackets, the exposed rafters will also be duplicated and replicated. So we'll go to the next slide. And then one more. And so this is the existing opening to the mudroom that we're going to replace with a hip roof canopy, door canopy, which is going to be another slide, a couple of slides forward. Yes, please. It hasn't moved yet, okay, sorry. So that's the existing mudroom entrance. We could go one more. And so here to the, to the left is the new canopy entrance. To the right is the inspiration for that, which is a door canopy with brackets for a guest house. So I think it's appropriate to have, similarly, a secondary entrance has brackets that are a material that could be painted the same color as the stucco. Otherwise, the rafter tails will be exposed to match that of existing secondary entrance to the service stair, which was on the previous slide. But we can go to the, the next one. To the right, those are the rafter tails that will match. To the left is the eve brackets and exposed rafters that will match for the garage roof. One more? Yes. And one last note about material. The front door is now painted green. They want to strip the door down and stain it a medium brown color. I'm going to go to the next slide. The garage door, synthetic wood, as of the exposure. And so that's the selection, the, the existing entry door would get stripped down to match that color, as would the new entry door for the mudroom. And then I think there's one more slide, just shows that we're going to be matching the existing trim in profile, as well as the black windows. We'll be doing that out of AZEC, not the vinyl material that's there now. And that's it for my part. We also have our attorney here, Jeff, some reflections from him, as well as the owner.
Why don't we start quite immediately? Partly, this is an architectural presentation, and if things come up for the engineer, we'd have them come up. Relative, any questions?
I guess... First of all, talk to, talk to us about the foundation for the garage. Because, as you mentioned, there is some steep stuff. And what, what is your plan in terms of the type of foundation that you intend to build? And how do you prevent further erosion over time to make the structure more robust?
Sure, I mean, it'll be conventional cement block foundation that's going to be much taller in the back. So it's going to start the same foundation. So there'd actually be a storage area under the garage, like another sublevel. That's going to have a conventional foundation that's frost protected. So the footing for that CMU eight-inch wall will be three and a half feet below grade. So it'll be, there'll be a basement for the garage.
And that would be below the, the, the...
Below the grade in the backyard.
For the, yeah, for the garage, there'll be a, a, a sub...
Another level that's nine feet.
Nine feet.
Below grade, below the grade in the front, but it'll be at grade in the back.
At grade.
Okay, there's a... Janice, I don't know if you want to go back to the... There's an elevation of the side of the house that shows the roof pitch. That's it. On the right, you can see the slope. The, the back half of the garage will have a storage basement under it. And then there'll be a full foundation below grade at the back wall.
And how would one access that space?
You can just walk into it from the backyard, because the backyard is 10 feet below the front yard.
So there would be like a door or something like that? Is that what's...
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Yes, exactly.
And then you said, you said with the, with the, the back wall of the, of the house.
Uh, cement, sorry, concrete block, probably with stucco to match the house. So it would just look like stucco.
So you're, I mean, you're, 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 the intent of the design is to make this fully complement the existing house?
Yes, to make it look like it always existed if they built garages back in the 1918s, 1920s, yes.
Was this ever discussed with the historical committee?
Yes, they made a few, they threw out a few ideas. And the one that we think that makes the most sense is to add a, a reveal between the new and the existing, a vertical line. And I, that, that drawing, I believe, is maybe in the file somewhere. I have a copy of it here. But it's a, a two-inch by two-inch reveal, signaled where the new and the, and the original are separated.
So the, I mean, the reveal from where it was constructed isn't sufficient. It's not, even though it resembles the original, or appears, so it's part of the original, it's not actually part of the original.
Correct, so it's a natural extension.
And the, and the intent of doing the, the garage is, is because at this point vehicles have to be parked in a certain driveway.
Correct, this would take cars off the driveway and put them into the garage.
And there's nothing above it that allows itself.
Correct, there's, there's not even enough height for storage, so it's, yeah. So it's, it's the bare minimum height that it can be. And the elevation shows very little massive wall because of the window for the mudroom. So it's just the doors come up to the eve, so it's, it's mostly paneling and glass. More paneling, glass, and trim than wall stuff.
And the, the mudroom would, in a sense, become sort of like the primary entrance. I mean, it's not the formal entrance, it is a formal entrance, which obviously would be, that currently exists.
Entrance that's most frequently used.
Yes.
Yes, because it provide, now provides direct access to the kitchen, whereas before they had to go back around and, and sort of do a ZD path.
You mentioned that, that there would be some trees that are removed.
Yes.
And that's, that's necessarily the potential, partly, as you see in the photos, there are a lot of trees in that space.
Yes.
And then, but you also mentioned, I mean, there would be replacements.
Correct.
And I said, is that the request of the neighbors, or is that the decision of the homeowner?
The homeowners thought it was a good idea. It's their property, they want to maintain a certain number of trees on the property.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if the trees that currently exist, you know, they're creating somewhat of a proper between the properties and, and that's the reason why we...
Uh, no, I mean, they're, they're not right up against the neighbors, they're... They're a good, the closest one is 20 feet away. So they're really just to fill in what's missing.
Just one of the questions that is, now with the, with the garage, the, the entrance onto the property from Lloyd Road, are you adjusting the, the, the...
Perp cut?
Perp cut, and everything stays the same?
Yes.
The, you said three trees to be...
I think it might be four.
Four. Is that also including the engineers, like stormwater, is that, is there more trees? Or is, do we have more trees, do you know, or is it four, or...
I, I believe it's, it's four, it's a consistent four between, yeah, yeah.
In the back, there are steps that, I guess the new garage will incorporate those steps within the new garage, and they'll have doors, and use those steps to get down to the patio?
They're, they're, yeah, they're next to the garage, like a bridge way.
Okay.
It's so it's buried, steps are between the existing house and the garage.
And you'll have a door, you're open, you can go down the steps, the back door that way on the...
Yeah, it's, it's the, well, there's a door from the interior to that, to the landing, to those steps, about halfway along the depth of the garage. So you come out of the kitchen to the mudroom, and then there's a last door with the landing, and then there's the run of stairs.
Okay. I think the proposed storage shed underneath the garage, I don't think it will go back.
Roughly halfway, so about 12 feet.
Okay. I looked at some of the pictures, it looks like there are leaders that are somewhat going to the street, or like underground connections to the street possibly. And I, obviously, the engineer's going to have the new leaders.
Right.
Connected to the stormwater, I imagine that would be the garage.
Yes.
Proposed lighting for you, is just the two lights in the front?
Um, there's a light, a service mount under the canopy of the...
Two, two light, two wall mounts, lights we have on the inside, or is that...
No, we're just proposing the...
It's not this big, this is just a bigger picture, correct?
Correct.
And one last thing. It's off the, out of my office here. There's a picture of the building of the side, where the roof line is going to go. Picture, north-facing side.
What image number?
Uh, that is going to be on that packet. So it doesn't have a facade, east facade rear, SK2. Or is that, is this, I mean, obviously, you're showing this line again, is that, is that a lecture?
That's a electrical power line.
Up to the roof? Is that like, that's not like a lightning rod? But you have it on your original, the proposed news. Additional, that line, the news up there.
We're, we're, the owner doesn't know what it is, so it's...
No worries. I'm hoping it's a lightning rod. All right, thank you.
Mr. Zouman?
Yes, thank you. Some questions. The setback, the 50-foot setback, this part of the house is already over that limit, it's built to the average already.
That's correct.
So you're just proposing to extend the current line in between the average and the 50 foot?
Exactly.
Okay, that's fair. And the 35% impervious coverage, that includes the additional paving required for the extension of the driveway?
Yes.
It does, all right. And the last question is, how close will the addition be to the, the neighbor's carriage house? I think it's on number 61, which is kind of like in the northeast area.
Look at image six.
Yeah, image six and image eight, how close would the finished building be to that?
I'm going to estimate at least 50 feet.
That much, okay.
I believe it, because the, the house is pretty far back.
So it's back and it's also lower, right?
It's, yeah, well, it's 15, yeah, 12 to 13 feet lower.
They say about 50 feet?
I would say at least 50 feet.
Okay. Yeah, no other question?
Yes, following up on the question on the, the variance you're requesting. The front yard setback is the only variance you're requesting, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And can you briefly describe the existing stormwater management, essentially the roof leaders, versus what is proposed? And if that's for the engineer, just let me know.
No, I can't, I'm going to let you talk to the engineer.
Yeah. And the steps, you know, the steps that are going to be removed. It wasn't clear to me that, so you're removing the steps, correct, that are on the north side of the...
Yes, the steps that lead, they lead to the backyard.
Yeah. Are you going to replace the steps, or are you going to be a connection?
Yes, there's new steps pretty much in the same place, but that lead from the expanded mudroom back down.
But not to the storage space?
Um, no, I think, so these are the steps, they're sort of in two locations. So by building the garage, the new steps are a straight shot, so that is an L-shaped path. But the, the steps are outside the garage.
Okay.
And then you enter the sub-basement from the outside.
Yeah, and, and the sub-basement is not meant to be occupied, correct?
Just the store.
Yeah, exactly, okay. Yeah, that's it, this is our only question, thanks.
Mr. Church? The sub-basement entrance on those steps, or is it...
It's not from the steps, it's from the rear yard.
Okay, how do they, is there a way to get up to that doorway? Will there be a way to get to that doorstep?
Yeah, because when you walk down to the patio, it's at the same level as the patio in the back.
Okay.
So if you're out here, you can just open the door and enter, because they have a full level.
Kind of match up with the patio.
Exactly.
Mr. Brad?
I have one question. Do you anticipate needing to coordinate with any neighbor, with your neighbor for the tree removal?
Maybe, they're, they're not, like I said, they're, the closest one is about 25 feet away, so I don't think so. Um, if it's...
How tall are the trees?
They're fairly mature. I think that there will have to be some coordination for a few branches, but I think, given the 25, 30-foot distance, I think it's a contentious issue of mine.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a few questions. Just making sure I'm understanding correctly, currently, there is not a separate entrance to the mudroom from the front of the house, is that correct?
Correct, you have to walk halfway, or about 15 feet, and then make a right turn, and then turn around and come back, and then go into the back, under it, and then throw in the kitchen.
So one of the positive things this is accomplishing, it's creating, is that entrance to the mudroom, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, I'm, I'm a little struggling and with the connection between the existing mudroom and the garage, or expanded mudroom, however you wanna look at that, you now have a nice solid wall there, how is that being accomplished?
Um, to get into the garage?
Yeah.
Uh, there's a door from the mudroom straight into the garage.
And then going back to the trees, two, two that you're removing are where the new driveway to the garage is located, one is at the corner of it, and the fourth is not adjacent, but I, I'm assuming you're gonna have to do significant excavation at the front of the garage in order to get the finished grade to match the finished grade into the rear, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's why that tree is being removed?
Yes, exactly.
And, um, the soil that's being excavated, what's becoming of that?
Um, again, that's probably a question for the engineers doing the, did the cut and fill analysis? There's, there's a new grading plan, that's part of the application.
We explored quite a lot of information, had a few recommendations. The one you went over, they said either setting it back or create a slight reveal, and you indicated you're gonna create the slight reveal, correct?
Yes.
Um, and, and it, they also, um, and the third recommendation was ensure consistency in the wood stain front doors and garage doors and testified you're gonna do that, correct?
Yes.
Then they also said, I'm not quite sure what this means, pay attention to replic- replicating part, so pay attention part, I don't know, to the replicating the bracket details and raftered nails for meticulous design.
Which we agreed to, and which is exactly what we're proposing on the drawings, to replicate, duplicate the existing details.
And then they also recommended making the garage more subordinate by recessing the front of the garage one foot. Can you give a reason why you're not doing that?
Um, I think it would look, uh, unbalanced, um, if we move the front wall back a foot, then the, the roof no longer, the grids will no longer be aligned with the existing ridge, and to me, it would just look like a mistake, we just have it a foot off. It would look awkward to have a two-foot eve for the whole house to have a consistent two-foot hanging even, then have the garage bisect the wall and only stick out one foot. Um, to me, it would just look like a mistake, and it looked like you're, it should either be several feedback, which would not be possible, then you couldn't have a garage, or align flush and just have a consistent ridge line, um, replicated.
Then the last thing they said was to consider retaining the arch doorway to the mudroom by recessing the door three feet with the building, uh, say why you're not doing that?
So functionally, it would compromise the, the mudroom, it would no longer be a mudroom, it'd be kind of an L-shaped hallway. Um, second thing is that a ten-foot-high, um, archway over the mudroom wouldn't, would be protected from the elements, it would just be, typically a canopy wants to be right over the door and provide protection. An archway would be over scaled for a small mudroom, but it would simply just wouldn't keep, uh, snow and leaves and dirt out of that area, it'd be no longer a protected, um, canopy or area.
Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? Just an opportunity for questions for this, so we, later opportunity if you have comments on it. Nope. Right. The engineer.
Raise your right hand, if you swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth.
I do.
And what is your name, spell your name, please?
Name is Jeff, last name is Garian, E G A R I A N.
You're a P E in St. New Jersey?
Correct, licensed professional engineer, my license is in good standing, and I have testified before the board two years ago, and obviously.
You have with you the site planning grading plan for the former residents?
That's correct, yes.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Um, much of the, much of the project scope was covered with the architect's testimony, I'll kind of expand on it um, a little bit and obviously answer any questions. Um, so obviously with the construction of the new building addition, we will be, uh, constructing a new driveway to connect with that um, addition, we will be removing much of the existing, uh, improvements in that area, the walkways, um, retaining walls and rear patio, uh, behind the house. We're gonna be increasing the building coverage from eleven point one percent to thirteen point five, where twenty percent is required, uh, which conforms, and obviously we discussed the previous coverage, that will be raising that from thirty-one point eight percent to thirty-five, where thirty-five feet is allowable.
Thirty-five percent?
Thirty-five percent is level, correct? Um, and the proposed, uh, new setback for the garage is forty-three point eight feet, where fifty feet is required, and just to note, there is an exist, the existing front yard setback for the home is thirty-eight point three eight. So with, with these improvements, um, there will be some minor regrading, um, in that portion of the property on the north side. We will be proposing, uh, small amounts of fill, obviously we'll be removing four trees, uh, in conjunction with the addition and the grading operation. Uh, to answer your question, uh, any excess fill, uh, on the property will be removed. Um, so we're not proposing to just leave all the fill on site, anything that's not being used will be removed. And, um, you know, lastly, the proposed addition's gonna be connected to, um, a one thousand gallon seepage pit, we're providing roughly four hundred and thirty cubic feet of, uh, volume, which equates to a little over thirty-two hundred gallons of water, so certainly this is gonna be an improvement over the, uh, existing conditions, that area right now, it is a steep slope area, uh, I don't know if the photographs give it enough justice, but there isn't much ground cover over there, there's not much lawn, um, so, you know, there is a high runoff air, uh, rate in that area, um, which will certainly be reduced, um, with these improvements, and, um, you know, it will be, uh, an overall improvement and not a detriment to those uh, adjacent properties as far as stormwater goes. I've read through the engineer's comment letter. I take no exception to his comments, and we can conform to all of those. So, um, I'll ask any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Feller. No questions?
Um, so the, the driveway, it looks like the driveway's higher and, and everything pitches back to the backyard, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you anticipate, uh, the proposed driveway you're putting up to the, the new garage, will that be um, Belgium block or something, curb on that side there?
It, yes, there will be, there will be curbing, yes.
You're gonna put a drain there at the corner, is that, or, or like?
There will be a channel drain across the entire width of the new driveway.
Okay. Do you anticipate getting equipment back there to be difficult?
I don't think so, no.
Um, and do you anticipate, um, more water, I mean, so you have, you have, the runoff would be, um, just a discharge area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then that tank that you're proposing there will store how much water in that application?
Uh, the volume is stored for the hundred-year storm, which is the most conservative of all values, and we're proposing rough, over thirty-two hundred gallons of water, four hundred and thirty cubic feet.
Okay, and you'll have all the leaders off of the new garage going to, going towards that, uh, stormwater, um, area, is that correct?
Along with the new driveway area.
Along with the new driveway area, yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simon.
No questions.
Mr. Vera.
Um, I guess some of the questions were already answered. The, the other question I had was, did, did you observe any erosion happening in the steep slope, or anything that needs to be done, from, from?
Um, well, part of the engineer's comment letter to us is he wants us to stabilize that slope with some geotmatting, which we will do, um, that technology works fantastic, um, so that will be implemented in that area, uh, again, to eliminate any, any further erosion. I do understand that, that, that area will be landscaped in the future, um, but certainly, um, even if it's never done or not, they don't get around to that geotnetting, geotnetting will prevent any, uh, erosion.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Church.
No question.
Ms. Harris.
The seepage tank, that's only collecting water from the garage, you're not gonna tie any other?
No, just, just the new, those improvements from the built, and the built, the garage addition and the driveway.
And then, um, how, what's the volume of your seepage tank?
It's a one thousand gallon tank, and which is with the stone voids, uh, and the overall cut, it's gonna yield approximately thirty-two hundred gallons of water.
Ms. Grant.
No questions.
One second, I'm reading through the engineer's short word, you're not agreeing to something you don't want to.
Sure.
But I didn't see, the engineer's, and it's just a question of whether I need to add anything, so, I didn't see anything the engineer reported about the question about the removal of excess material.
Okay, I have a note on my plan that states any excess material should, shall and will be removed from the, from the site.
Tell him.
Uh, note number.
So here's the plan.
It's note number eight, the first sentence of number eight.
Have the last key part indisposed of lawfully?
Absolutely. Easily do.
But I need to, that, the condition, does, does the note say that?
No, you have to add that.
Okay. Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness?
Nope.
This. Anyone on behalf of the applicant want to say anything before we? Well, let me, first, are there, let's do, does the applicant want to present any other testimony?
No, I think my team's good.
Um, are, are there any members of the audience who have any testimony, comments, anything you wanna say about the application? This is your one and only opportunity. Now, does the applicant want to say anything, or any, any of its witnesses, any their witnesses want to say anything further?
Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll start discussion, Mr. Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm generally in favor of this application, I think that these are great improvements for the site. Now, I would like to hear from my colleagues about the, the front yard parking, I mean, that, it's, you know, this is a topic of discussion that we've had before, but in general, I think, uh, it's a good addition. Um, it, it's an existing, um, a variance, or non-conformance, um, so it's, it's, it's just that, I think there's improvements on the stormwater management on the site, um, slope stabilization with the, uh, geomat- geomatting. Um, I think that, that would be great to control any erosion caused by, uh, by water. And, um, yeah, so I'm okay.
Mr. Simon.
Actually, I have one more question, um, how many vehicles do you own?
Two.
So both will be inside the garage, so nothing is expected to be outside anyway?
But just do me a favor, but the engineer, you're aware that they have two cars? He just told you.
Yes, I am aware of the two cars.
And the two cars are gonna be put in the garage, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Yeah, that guy's under oath.
So the intent is to not have any cars visible from the street after this construction?
You're all in, sorry.
Yeah, let's swear in. Tried to save it, but, raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're gonna give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And identify yourself and spell your name.
Elias, E L I A S, last name Zouner, Z A U N E R.
You can, you can say it.
Sorry, I missed one question, but, it's just to confirm that the intent is not to have any cars visible from the street once this construction is complete?
Yeah, we only own two cars, no plans to buy any more cars.
Okay, that was it, thank you, I'm in favor.
Paul Field.
Um, you, you're not proposing to put a second story down on the top of this someday, are you?
No.
Okay. Um, I'm in favor, I just, you know, ha- having that, being that way, maybe someone past you might wanna put a second addition on that, but otherwise, I'm in favor of this project.
Feller.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also in favor of this, so I'm presuming, however, that, uh, you're not making a statement that cars will never be parked.
If we have guests in our home, that would be a reason.
There will be times, maybe even overnight, because it is on your property, so, but the intent is for your permanent vehicles to be in the garage, as opposed to being in, in certain.
It's the main reason we want the garage, I mean, especially in the winter, with snow and ice, coming into the garage is the main motivation for the project. Ms. Harris.
Um, I'm in favor, and, um, to answer Mr. Vera's question about the, um, the parking in the front, I don't think there's any place else on the state that's a garage to fill, so.
Ms. Grant.
I'm in favor, I do have one more question.
Seems to be the pattern.
I'm, I was going to ask about if you encounter groundwater, there's a note here about encountering groundwater, but it says contact the engineer, so what was the plan if you encounter groundwater on with the excavation for the garage?
As part of the seepage tanks, then we need to do a field percolation test. Uh, so that's a general note, but the city requires us to prove to them before we, uh, get our building permits that that's gonna be acceptable. So it's standard note, but we need to submit a percolation test and do a test fit, so, um, I don't really have a note, but that is handled under the building permit, and I, I do coordinate that with the city engineer.
Okay, thank you.
What number is that?
Um, it's number uh, five.
Oh, it's on the plan.
Yes, on the plan.
Mr. Church.
I'll break the pattern, no questions, I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor of the application, I think, you know, the one part of the house approaches further on the front yard setback than the proposed garage does, it lines up with that part of, part of the house it's adjacent to, because of the slope, they really can't move it back further and, um, no reason to shrink its width, um, I think, um, you know, given the location of the house and the property justifies the granting of the variance and result in a substantial detriment to the public, or substantial impairment to its own plan, uh, the condition.
Okay, well, Mike told me when you started the conditions to press record, go ahead.
That the, they should adhere to the second part of the first condition of Historic Pres- Preservation Commission, that they create a slight reveal between the addition and the building for aesthetic enhancement, and they adhere to the second and third condition for the historic preservation as the testimony indicated. And with, that they adhere to the provisions in the engineer's memo as stated, and that um, that any excess fill that is removed from the property shall be disposed of lawfully. Any other comments, conditions for members of the board, if not, would someone like to make a motion to approve of those conditions?
I will make a motion to approve the application, what's the conditions mentioned?
Seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was in this brand, stuck abstaining.
How quickly can you get set up, should we take a break now, or?
We'll get set up in thirty seconds.
Okay, do it.
Yes.
It's just my hearing, it's a big way.
Thank you.
No, no, you're just gonna tell me.
If you see me get up and get in, you'll know why. As long as I see him walking in.
Yes, yes, yes. You're stuck, John. It's weird objective, now we.
Yeah.
These belong to you.
You're just sitting up, you go to the front. Sorry, I'm gonna just coordinate mine.
Okay. Start while he's sitting up, we can get started.
We're here for a continuation of the public hearing on the application of four hundred on Road, um.
Mr. Kevin Gregory-McSerra, Van Roy, McDonald, and Sarada Girona, on behalf of the applicant, as you had just stated, this is a continuation. Mr. Chairman Gregory Masera, Van Royd McDonald, Masera de Girona, on behalf of the applicant, as you had just stated, this is a continuation of the application, we were rest here in May. We, since that time, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to report that we have heard the public, people who attended the meeting, we set up and had a meeting, an informal meeting with members of the community in the area of the application on Pleasant Way in a good place, it was an open invitation. We had, we thought it was a very productive meeting, and hopefully we have satisfied the dangers as well, and we have addressed some of the concerns that many members of the board had addressed. Very briefly, and then we'll start with the witnesses, we've reduced the number of units, seven, changed the style dramatically from the style that you had introduced to something much more traditional, Mr. Garber will, will testify to. We reduced the height of the townhouses to two and a half stories, at least on both sides. Arguably, we need a, we still need a variance for a third story, if you view it from the rear, but we will address that. We substantially changed the access, there is now only one-way drive within breast, excuse me, we eliminated the, the North Place access, and now we have two-way ingress and egress on Pleasant Way, and we're therefore, because we have reduced a unit, we now only need eighteen spaces rather than twenty-one spaces. We've reduced the total building area by approximately fifteen percent. The total impervious, we have reduced by approximately sixteen percent, we substantially reduced the rear yard step back. So, I'm excited for Mr. Garber to be able to introduce that testimony and to proceed with his new, his new redrings and plants. First, though, because we're not sure how, how far we're gonna get this evening, Mr. Chairman, one of the big concerns at the last meeting was with regard to the prior contamination on the property. I say prior contamination, we have Mr. Ron Dooney here this evening from Terms Consulting, he was the LSRP on this project, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Dooney as my first witness, and then proceed with testimony from Mr. Dooney.
Okay, so just for the record, in May, Simone Klappner, the applicant, was sworn, and Richard Garber, the architect, was sworn in, so anyone other than them are gonna be sworn in tonight, so can you please raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give in this, I'm gonna do one. The matter will be the truth, the whole truth, anything but the truth.
I do.
Okay, and can you, again, give, for the record, your name and spell your last name?
Ronald Dooney, D.O.O.N.E.Y., and it's junior.
Okay, and your credentials, are you a?
I am an licensed LSRP, which is Licensed Site Remediation Professional, licensed by New Jersey and the, and the Licensing Board, LSRP Licensing Board.
Okay.
Except you and.
Mr. Dooney, you're familiar with the site, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and when did you first become familiar with the site?
It was probably in March of two thousand twenty-three.
And what was, were you engaged for a purpose by the property owner?
Yes, we were engaged to address several, several areas of concern that had been identified as remaining at the site at that time.
And who had identified those areas of concern?
It was identified essentially in a phase one that was run by Brink's Environmental, they are an environmental consult, mediation company.
Okay, so you were hired by the owner to then?
I was hired, yes, I was hired directly by the owner to oversee the work that had to be done and, and done whatever work we needed to do ourselves, but I oversaw everything, it's the LSRP.
Okay, and just to cut to the chase, was the work ultimately done?
Yes, the, there were several tanks that were left at the property at that time to, specifically to fifteen hundred gallon former gasoline tanks, and there was an area in the back that was mounded with some soil fill material, and that was removed, and we removed it to a depth until we got clean samples.
And you ultimately got clean samples?
We got clean samples in the tank area, after removing a little bit of soil there and removing soil in the back, and then we got clean samples there as well.
Were there any, was there any other environmental remediation that you were required to do under state regulations?
No, we did, we did include groundwater investigation as part of the tank area, and also to triangulate groundwater flow, so we had three monitoring wells, and none of the contaminants of concern were identified in any of, there was sodium in one well, I believe.
And you subsequently corresponded with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection?
As the LSRP, I issued a, what is now called the Response Action Outcome Letter, RAO for short. In the past, the DEP would issue No Further Action Letter, but when they began the LSRP program in two thousand and nine, phased in by two thousand, well, we now issue RAO letters instead of NFA.
You issued that letter January twenty-second of twenty twenty-four, is that correct?
I did.
And you have a copy of that letter, I believe Janice will be the next page?
That's, might be it.
That's, that's actually, I could, I could explain that now, or?
Okay, let's go, right now, there's an exhibit on the state of New Jersey, and it's a letter from nineteen ninety-five, I believe, it's an NFA, is that correct?
Do we have a paper copy of that, that could be in as an exhibit?
We can submit a paper copy, Joe, I don't have one, probably.
Print it.
Can you print it? Okay, so why don't we print it, and let's make that Exhibit A seven?
A seven, okay.
And so, what's A seven?
A seven is a letter from nineteen ninety-five from the New Jersey, I think at the time it was DEP, and it is a No Further Action Letter. And, yes, Mr. Dooney, please.
At that time, the DEP provided oversight, there was no LSRP program, and this letter indicates the DEP was satisfied and issued a No Further Action Letter for three eight thousand gallon gasoline tanks at the time, and one five hundred fifty gallon waste oil tank, including all of the dispensers and piping that was removed at that time. So when we got in, there were two tanks left, these tanks were removed in nineteen ninety-five, and that letter indicates the approval of the DEP.
So you were able to, as the LSRP skipping forward to twenty twenty-four, you're able to rely on that No Further Action Letter, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but your further investigation also was consistent with the findings of that NFA, is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Quick, quick, the No Further Action Letter, it was issued just for the stuff that was removed, or did they miss the two other tanks that were there?
Well, it was, it was issued for those tanks that were removed at the time, so there were two tanks that were left there that weren't included in this NFA.
Okay.
Janice, if you could turn the page to the next page, please? Mr. Dooney, can you identify this, it looks like a three-page letter that is on one screen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is another one, we're gonna, can you print this one out?
A eight.
A eight.
Letter from whom?
Yeah, identify.
It's from myself, Ronald Dooney, as the LSRP.
And who is the letter addressed to?
It is addressed to Simon Klappner, the owner of the property.
Okay.
And it, as, as if you can read it, it indicates that it, the Response Action Outcome Letter is for, or addresses areas of concern, including the two fifteen hundred gallon tanks that were removed, and the debris, we call the debris area in the back that was piled up, that we removed everything that had any impacted soil in it, and also the groundwater investigation, which didn't reveal anything above the standards for, for our investigation.
Is this the Response Action Outcome Letter?
No, it'll be next.
Okay.
This is the Response Action Outcome Letter.
Letter, but not the.
No, I understand, and what date, this is the January twenty-two, twenty twenty-four?
January twenty-two, twenty-four, yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Do, Mr. Dooney, Mr. Klappner testified last week, last time we were here, that all of the environmental issues have been resolved, is this your confirmation to him that all of the environmental issues have been resolved?
Yes.
The next page, please, Janice? That's, okay, well.
The report exists.
Okay, let's talk about, let's talk about the report, can you briefly describe to the board, and as briefly as you can, without getting into the science, of what goes into the report and that ultimately is carried into the, into the outcome response letter?
Sure, each area of concern, depending on what it entails, requires a site investigation to determine if any contamination exists at that area. If it does, the DEP then requires you to delineate it in a phase called the remedial investigation phase, and if anything, anything you've identified and delineated, then can either be removed or in some cases capped, in this case, everything was removed, and that would constitute the remedial action phase. Once that is done, and you've got all your samples, generally referred to as post-excavation samples, and they're clean, that allows, under the regulations, me to issue this RAO.
And it's your opinion unequivocally this evening that your work is done, and that the property, that there's no further action that is required of the property owner as it relates to the DEP?
Yes.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Just to follow, do you have any question?
Just, I guess one question, this is, I was, in the last, the last meeting when we settled on this application, there was certainly exposed by some of the public witnesses skepticism about the removal of any contaminated materials. And, and so it just sort of raises the question of, how is, how is that done in such a way that neighbors would not be aware that that work is being undertaken, I mean, is that normally is it done in a, in a way that is rather?
If you're asking, would it be obvious that work was being done at the site? Certainly, the tanks were removed, fifteen hundred gallon tanks are twenty feet long, six feet diameter, they were sitting actually on the site for more than a couple days, I, I actually received a call from the town and a, and a neighbor asking why the tanks were still there, and they were, I called Brink's who had removed them, they were waiting on the profiles, I guess, to make sure that, I mean, the results, to make sure there was no more sampling, and once we knew that everything was good, a couple days later, the tanks were moved. So it was obvious these tanks were sitting there, there used to be a pile of soil, now there's a hole in the back, which we did not fill because of the planned redevelopment, and, so, yeah, I think, I think it would have to be relatively obvious that there was work being done there.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly was a question that seemed to, to occupy quite a bit of concern and angst on the part of, of some of the public witnesses. How could this, they were very skeptical that this work had actually been accomplished, but you're giving us an indication that says that, that in fact, this was done, and that someone in the public, at least one person in the public, had, had queried as to why those tanks were still sitting there, and subsequently, those tanks were removed.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Paul Field, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so nineteen ninety-five is thirty years ago, right? Do we, why is, why were some tanks taken out and some were not?
It's not uncommon for them to, they might have still been in use at the time, and, and just as an aside, because it happens to be that far back, the standards used to be much more stringent than they are for hydrocarbons now. For instance, just, they were a hundred parts per million was the cleanup standard, and then they went to ten thousand, and now they're back to fifty-one, so they would have cleaned it up to a hundred back then, much more than you would do now.
Okay. I don't know if it's good or bad, but.
Well, they've changed the standards over time, they went much lower, then they went back halfway, and that's where, about they sit now.
Do we know, it was, I mean, the facility was a landscaping business, these tanks were for gasoline, is not necessarily what a landscaping review, right? This is like maybe a gas station.
It was a former gas station, definitely.
One well found, would, what?
Sodium, naturally occurring, the DEP considers it what they call secondary constituent, and unless you're producing sodium at the site, it's, you don't have to investigate it any further.
Okay, thank you.
You said the tanks were removed, and they remained on the site while they waited for the results to come back?
Yeah, I believe that that was the reason they sat there initially, they might have not gotten back to them right away, but they were, they were there a couple days after, after the town, someone from the town called me, and the neighbor called me.
So what they?
Actually, I called them on, at the request of some of them from the town.
Were they protected or isolated in any way?
They were stored on the site on plastic, I believe, they, they were cut, first of all, I didn't explain that process in detail, but when you pull a tank, you excavate the top, you cut it open, you pump out any residual, and then you go in and clean it out to the point where you're wiping it down with oil absorbent pads, so when that tank comes out, it's clean, clean, and it has to be rendered unusable before it could go off-site, which it was, so while it was sitting there, it had been cleaned completely before it was removed from the ground.
So in, in that timeframe that they're waiting test results, if the tests that came back negative or, or bad, those tanks sitting out, they wouldn't have contributed to any other?
No, I think that the reason is, you don't wanna mobilize back to the site, get rid of the tanks, and then have to go back out when you get results and say, oh, now there's more digging, yeah, if you're gonna have to do more digging, leave the tanks there, because when you're done digging, then you will use the equipment you dug to put the tanks on a truck.
Okay, so, so the fact that the tanks are wiped down meant they posed no danger while they were waiting for the results?
They were totally clean, they have to be, in order to get them scrapped, they won't accept anything that's not perfectly clean, because that's how they're disposed of, they're at a scrap now.
Thank you.
Just so the record, Mr. Sullivan had replaced Mr. Drill and?
Mr. Drill is quite thrilled to see me, I might ask.
Mr. Viera, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a chair, question about, as part of the scope of your work, did that include also soil borings around the site?
There were soil borings that I reviewed that were conducted by Brink's during their phase one, and there were no other areas where contamination was identified, the tanks had to come out whether they were, was any contamination or not, but in that case, there was a little bit, but the test borings around there, the only ones that found anything were in that back area, associated with, what we call the debris pile, I think, on that RAO. And other than that, they did other borings, analyzed for whatever possible constituents, pesticides, other hydrocarbons, and the borings, which is a phase two, you do a phase one, you identify any potential areas, and you investigate those as a phase two, and if there's contamination, then you're gonna have to go through the DEP process to get a clean bill of health, if there's no contamination, then you stop into phase two. So there was phase two done on areas, and we focused in on the areas where contamination in the tanks were.
So the, just to confirm, there was a phase two, so borings were done, and then the remediation focused on the back of the property, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, the, the other question I had is, as part of the due diligence, are you aware that, were there any scans done to kind of verify that there are no other tanks, because we can also, two fifteen hundred tank, fifteen hundred gallon tanks were left, just to confirm, there's nothing else buried in the ground?
Yes, there was, Brink's did a GPR, ground penetrating radar survey, and found nothing else, they do that with the NASA equipment, and given where the tanks were apparently located before, the two we pulled were in the front right corner, as viewed from orange, the other ones were reportedly right front, three eight thousand gallon tanks are rather large, so there's not a lot of extra space in that front where you might have put another tank, and the waste oil tank was on the, on the back right side of the building. So, but they did do a GPR, and did not find anything else.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions? Not at this time. Ms. Grant, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do. Um, so the, the two tanks that um you are speaking about, they were registered with D E P?
Yes, and we had to put in a fourteen day closure notice. It's not an approval, it's just a notice that you intend to pull them. D E P doesn't really do much about that anymore. They want to make sure that their, the registration is paid up the day. That's their real concern with that notice. But yes, that was done, um, and then the permit was taken out locally. And then, once the tanks were removed, we delisted them with, uh, it's a process D E P has. When you're doing anything with tanks that are regulated, either you're putting new ones, you're changing ones, or you're removing them, you would, you would do a delisting at all.
The, um, the tanks, um, usually like, you know, when you have a tank, it's inspected on, um, when it was in use. Um, and this, these tanks were in use from nineteen ninety five.
The, the other tanks were removed in ninety five, I believe according to the phase one, they were still there at that time.
At that time, mhm.
Um, when they actually stopped being used, that we don't have anything that says specifically. But now, yes, they have to be inspected. You have a, a bunch of systems when you upgraded them to be in compliance that are like alarms and overfill alarms and, you know, what they call interstitial, where, where if something leaks through one wall, you'll catch it.
Mhm.
Back then, they didn't have that, but they did have periodic inspections of, of them.
Um, when you finish your report, um, any of that historic information on the tanks is listed in the report? Like, if there were, or were inspections or any of those records about, um, how the tanks were maintained when they were in use?
No, because the way to deal with that is you take the tanks out, you determine if there's holes. You might report it just because of the holes, or if you see or smell, or we have field screening instruments, and if you find anything through any of those methods, you would go investigate further, take samples. In this case, we did, and we had to remove a couple hundred tons of material that appeared impacted. And then, once that was done, we went in and take samples, which is, um, one every side will every thirty feet, one every five feet on the bottom of each tank.
Mhm.
So you basically, you know, you're getting for those tanks, uh, probably eight, nine samples each.
The reason why I was asking is because, um, if there, if there was a, um, usually when there's a leak, then you know it's reported. So maybe, um, some of that, um, historic information would, um, ease some of the residents' concerns about, um, from the time the tanks were in use until they were kind of removed, um, that there were no incidents. So that's why I brought that up, I mean.
Well, there is, when we found contamination, we did call in to the hotline, which is a spill uh response hotline. You call in, you get an incident number, and then that incident number is part of the overall project identification within the D E P's process.
Mhm.
And that is listed, I believe, on the, uh, the communication number is twenty two. So on August eighth at, uh, four thirty three, that was reported. But that's the only time you would know that there was a release underneath the tank was after you pulled the tank.
That's my only question.
Ms. Harris? I, I have an editorial comment, but you don't have to respond to. I am fascinated what was happening in D E P in the mid nineties in Essex County, because another site, Mount Claire, that I've been involved in, they issued an N F A that really shouldn't have been issued. And I'm curious, because, you know, we, we approved the individual garbage ten hundred ninety six, including, clearly the gas station was gone at that point, and there was no reason for any of the tanks remaining. You don't have to answer, I just, I'm fascinated that, uh, I do have a couple questions for you. Does this need to read remedial action permit?
No. The, the only time you would need a permit is if you left any contamination, like historic building had compound above the standard. In this case, we removed it to avoid any need for a permit or a deed notice for that.
By, by this same token, just to confirm, there's no need for a deed notice, there's no need for engineering controls, there's, it's over and done.
The deed notice would be an institutional control and a cap would be an engineering, and there's no need for either of those.
And then, last question, you indicated that pre-monitoring wells were installed, are those still in place?
They are, they're gonna be removed as part of the redevelopment.
That was my next question. Okay. Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? Again, this is just an opportunity to ask questions, of a later opportunity to have any comments on the application, and it's only questions of this witness about the site remediation. I know you had a number of questions before, and now they provide the witness who should be able to answer any questions about it.
How are you?
Um, I spoke with you, so I am the witness.
Just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Janet Ebert out of the five, we're placed on Claire. I'm leaving my mask on because of what we're, um, um, Mr. Downey, I spoke to you about the tanks. You said that the tanks initially were removed a couple of days and then you changed it. I live directly across the street. Those tanks sat there for at least four months, four to five months, along with the debris, massive piles of, so your statement about removing them was when I called you and got in at the D E P, you said to me, we were not aware that those tanks were still there. You said, it's, are those things still there? And I said, they are. And thankfully, he would, he came and removed them the very next day. But those tanks sat there for at least six months. They were rained on, they were not cleaned, they were rusted out. There was no filter, no netting put over the dirt whatsoever. I did not see hundreds of tons of dirt.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, is there a question of this witness?
Yeah, the question is, you said, you, you don't listen.
Ma'am, he's the witness.
I understand, but I'm talking to, to him, not you.
Oh, but the, the attorney has the, he, he has the right to object, which is what he just said.
This is not a trial, but.
But, but it is a quasi judicial hearing.
I understand.
And he has the right to object.
Okay, what is he objecting to?
He was, he was, he was, he was objecting because you were going on and on and on and were not asking a question.
I'm asking the question, when did the tanks get removed?
That's a question.
You said at first, there were two to three days, it was months. Please tell me when. I spoke with you on the phone.
The incident was called in on August eighth of twenty three. The tanks were removed sometime, maybe it was months later, but after you called, it was several days. And the, the tanks were absolutely clean. I inspected them. I know they were clean. I'm an L S R P in the state of New Jersey, and if I made that representation, that would, I wouldn't make that representation because it wasn't true. They were cleaned, they were staged offsite, and if they stayed there longer than they absolutely needed to be, I, you know, maybe they could have been removed a little bit earlier, but they, again, were waiting to see if we had to do other work. And actually, as I pointed out before, you don't want to come and remove the tanks and then find out your results are above the standard and you have to go back again. You want to remove the tanks after you know you're done and you're either backfilling or you're done with your sampling. And in the back area, the samples that we had, we had to dig several more times to get more soil out. So during that time, the tanks would have been sitting there, yes.
But, Mr. Downey, you said that you removed the tanks in March of twenty twenty three. Did you not, am I correct or am I incorrect about that?
August.
August of twenty twenty three.
That's when the report was, the incident was called into the D E P.
And the tanks were set there for at least six months thereafter with all the debris.
Well, it couldn't have been six months because I issued the R A O in January.
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty fourth.
Twenty twenty three.
I'm saying, they were, they were re, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
If they were removed in August, and I issued the letter in January, the tanks would have been removed sometime in the latter part of two thousand and twenty three. And if it was August and it was removed in November, how many months is that? It's not six months, it's more like four.
Yeah, but you said a couple of days initially.
After, after I was advised with a phone call from the town and from you, that the tanks were still there, I called, they said, yeah, we have everything, we'll get out there and get rid of the tanks, and that's what happened.
Okay, well, there is a discrepancy in what you said, so I wanted to make sure. And I thank you for removing the tanks. My next question is this, there is one tank still in the back that needs to be kept, is that correct?
No.
What needs to be kept?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Why was there no netting or any sort of netting set on the dirt? Because during rainstorms, and I'm directly across the street, there was rivers of red mud of that site pouring into sewer systems while those tanks sat there and that dirt and debris sat there. I did an Instagram post about the website. Why was that site not netted so that that dirt did not move and run?
When you say netted, I, I'm, I'm sure.
According to the D E P, I was told that the dirt needed to be netted so that it didn't move.
I, I mean, as far as netting, I don't know what that refers to. I've been in this industry since nineteen eighty three, I've never heard of netting the soil, so I'm really not sure what you're talking about.
Well, let, let me ask a little, were any soil erosion control measures installed around the dirt pile?
There was a plastic on top of it, which at one point, I know, came off, and they just went out and they put more plastic on. That's what, according to what I saw and what I was told.
You'll have a later opportunity to present any evidence you want to present.
Okay. Mr. Downey, this is all that's been sitting on top of the dirt, it's a snow fencing for the last year. This is all that's been sitting on top of any of the dirt.
What third part you got? I'm not sure what you're referring to.
This is the back hole, and there was nothing on the dirt pile that was in the front, but the two tanks came out of the front. I saw the dirt go back into the, into the hole.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure the relevance of, I mean, making an application, we have testimony that it, the property has been cleaned, certified.
Why don't we have a copy of it?
And I'm not really sure what the relevance of when it was cleaned matters, or.
Maybe get a copy of it.
Okay. Let me do several things. When you're going to testify, if you want to rely on what is on your cell phone, please print out what, what you have so we can see it. Assuming, one, I don't want you to pass around your phone to all us and Mr. Rosero to look at it, but, so, you know, anything you want to introduce that you have photos on your cell phone, please print that out so we can look at it. I.
May I make a suggestion? First of all, we didn't even know where this meeting was being held. So we, we could, if we could get the copies of these reports.
Okay, so.
As neighbors, it would be great.
That are as obscure to me as it is to you, the, these two documents that were introduced tonight, A seven and A eight, they didn't have prepared, they distribute to the board or the public before the hearing. We are not going to finish the hearing tonight, so they were going to be printed out, they'll be available at, in the planning office, you know, for your inspection, or you can call, you know, the planning staff asked for a copy to be emailed. I, you know, the meeting, the council needed to move its meeting because of the special election to replace Congressman Payne. They chose tonight, no one had the foresight to realize we were scheduled to meet in the council chambers. I am more unhappy than you are that we are meeting here, but we were bumped. And there were signs throughout the building saying, we're up here. But it's the same night we announced, the same building we announced.
That's no further questions. I just wanted to ask, Mr. Downey, those two questions.
Are there any, guys, please come up and give your name and address again, please.
Hi there, Chantal Balivar, I live in Seventeen Ward Place. Um, I guess, um, I'm just gonna go with what I heard before. I guess like the question of the safety, of the cleaning and everything, and the fact that you said a couple of days, but it was a couple of months, I guess our concern is, do they really care about us, about the neighborhood? You almost feel like they will, of course, you know, do or say anything to have the authorization, but at the end of the day, they're saying, they're making statements that were not true, so it's hard to, to trust the whole project.
Okay, do you have a question of the witness?
What would you be doing for us to trust you? And because I heard a lot of, I assume, I assume, I assume, but Miss Janet that lives across doesn't see what you're saying, so. And it seems like, you know, the documents, there's some documents, but not everything is published.
Actually, it is, it is published, and I believe this was submitted along with those two letters, the actual final report.
Right.
That says, here's what was done and how it complies with the regulations. Um, as far as, when I say assume, I'm not on the site twenty four hours a day, I'm relying on, to some extent, on, on people that are there to tell me what's going on on any particular day, but I go out periodically on every site, I look at what's going on, and I make sure that it's in compliance. And, you know, I, I understand how these are not typical situations for the neighbors and for the residents, but I can assure you that this is, this was done in a very typical way of the D E P following the D E P rules. And, you know, that's, that's all I, I mean, I could tell you that it was done right, and if you don't trust what I'm telling you, I mean, the D E P trusts me enough to license me and, and act as their representative on sites. And that was the whole process that was created through the cybermediation format.
You just report today was not exact, so that's why, you know, I'm, I'm asking, you know, how can we trust your words if, you know, there is a lot of assumption, as you said.
But first of all, there was a question about the two days. I never said the tanks were removed two days after they were pulled. I said they were moved two days after I was made aware they were still on the site, and that someone had an issue with it. There's nothing in the D E P rule that says they have to be removed within three months, four months. They could, they could sit out there for longer. I mean, there's no rule that says you can't do that.
Because if they're out there, if you're supposed to remove them to remove the issues and they're sitting there for a month and being rained on, like, isn't it an issue?
If, if they weren't cleaned, I would agree that there might, that maybe they shouldn't be left there if they weren't cleaned, but they were cleaned. I, I personally inspected them. I'm not assuming that, I did it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Leonora Rush, I'm at Seventeen Ward Place. My first question is, is there any requirement or recommendation from the D E P to notify any of the residents within the surrounding area?
There is, um, a public notification, if you're doing a remediation, that would, would require a sign, which I had a picture of the sign, I don't know if it's in a report, but there was a sign up at one point. I don't know how long it stood there after they finished their, their, the digging out there.
Would you know approximately where the sign was located, on what street?
I think it was on the front right corner.
And there, is it a, a general size, uh, that it's supposed to be?
I don't know, sort of two by something. Not sure exactly what the dimension is, there is a dimension.
So it's a, would be a small sign then?
Yeah, relatively small sign, it's not.
So easy to miss, perhaps, in your excavation?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the only public notice?
That's correct.
And that's.
You have choices, you can either put a sign, or you can send out a letter to everybody within two hundred feet.
And whose responsibility or choice is to do that?
The responsible party, in this case, the property owner.
Who makes the recommendation to the property owner? Or, or, or makes the property owner aware of the different ways to do that?
Uh, either myself or anybody involved who was directly communicating with them, but in this case, I told the property owner through Brink's and Flinx did a sign, and there was a picture of that sign somewhere. I think it's in the report that you, that you made public, I guess, at the. So, yeah, it's, it's, somebody's got to tell them, and in this case, I told Brink's, Brink's told them, and that's the way it went.
Is that to notify, it, it, just so I'm clear, I'm sorry, you may have answered this, but is that to notify a cer, is there like, to notify a certain radius of people within the area?
You have two choices to satisfy that public, uh, notification. One is a sign or the other is a letter to everyone within two hundred feet.
Within two hundred feet? Okay, that's helpful, thank you, I do appreciate that. Um, the second question I have is, now, you said the tanks were removed on what date? Approximately to the best of your recol- recollection?
August eighth.
No, no, I'm, well, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. You said the tanks, when were the tanks actually pulled up out of the ground?
I believe August eighth. Because what happens in almost every case is you remove the tank and if you identify any sign of contamination, you call it into the, to the D E P's hotline.
So, you believe they were, they were actually removed on August eighth?
I think so, it would be, the exact dates in the report, but I think based on that incident number, that, the incident number is the date, it's the year, the month, the day and the time of day. And then how many calls that day, in this case, it looks like there was, uh, you can tell it was, uh, thirty, thirty-eight calls, that heck. Anyway, that's what the, I'm just telling you what that case number or incident number is actually, it's the date and time.
So, removed on or about August eighth? And then it's cleaned on that same day? It takes, does that, no?
Not necessarily, no. It's, well, you, you start investigating, sometimes you have to do one round and you just take samples and it's clean, sometimes you have to go back and take more samples. In this case, we remediated what was obviously impacted, then we took the post-examination samples. But there are many cases where you take those post-examination samples and some, one or more are still dirty. So you have to go back out, dig some more soil out, wait for the results from the lab, then decide if you have all clean samples and then you could be done with that area.
And the report would detail that they'd be, so, okay. All right, so the report would detail exactly how long the tanks would have remained out and the possibility of the back and forth that the, this particular situation would have required.
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm not, if there's a specific concern, maybe, you know, you're asking.
I, I am asking questions.
I'm trying to answer.
Specific, and you are, actually, um, specific questions, okay. So, we don't know exactly how long that process took place, but it's supposed to be within the report?
Yes.
Okay. And then from when the tanks were actually removed from the ground and then, um, actually removed from the area, from August to November?
Again, I don't know the exact date that we had that conversation, but it was several days, two days, I believe, um, after I had that conversation that they were removed. That will be also in the report, the scrap receipt would indicate what they, they were taken to the facility. And that would be an attachment to the report.
And at any other time during this process, is there any other requirement to notify the people within two hundred mile, well, would you say two hundred feet?
Two hundred feet, not, not unless you had to put a deed notice, uh, and a permit in place. Or if you had groundwater contamination and we didn't have any of those. So, that would be a situation where you might have to do additional notifications.
Thank you, Mr. Dooney.
There, are there any other members of the public who have questions, or Mr. Scott?
Good evening, Liam Scott. I have rental property at three eighty-two Orange Road. I'm outside of that two hundred foot range of notice. But, uh, being retired for the last ten years, I've visited my property in Orange many, many times. And I was fully aware, watched the, uh, mediation process quite some time. And I, and I can concur, neighbors, that, that I had the same concern because, you know, you can almost see on a daily basis, it was quite a bit of activity. I, I just have one additional, uh, have a question for you. There was also work being done by Public Service on the corner of Orange Road and Ward Place. Uh, and they had a major diggy, uh, which was right next to one of those major tanks. And there was also a sewer stream on that corner as well. So if there was any issue with leakage, not even should Public Service was, uh, made aware or any of your testing would be able to, there could have been some leakage into the sewer system.
There was no indication that it went and were near that far. It was, uh, maybe, I think, I don't know, a hundred fifty yards, two hundred, uh, two hundred some odd tons. And it didn't extend very far, the report will show exactly where the tanks were and how far away the contamination extended before we had clean samples. I wasn't aware they were digging up and I'm not sure when that happened. But, um, but again, if, if this was reaching a sewer line or a utility line, uh, we would have encountered it when we were cleaning it out because we have to keep digging until we get clean samples. So if we, we had to go further and further and we encountered a utility line, that would have, um, you know, first of all, we do have to, everyone in New Jersey before they dig, they have to call the utility mark out in three days prior. So everybody in the utility companies would come out and mark out the electric and the gas and the sewer and whatnot. So those are all marked out before you do it. So you know, if you're anywhere near them, uh, especially if it's a gas line, they would sometimes want to come out and watch you do it. But to my knowledge, we're nowhere close enough to worry about that. Well, I mean, with, with our excavation, I mean, is it twenty feet away? I mean, we worry when there's a utility line two feet away from where we're gonna dig, that's a problem. If it's ten feet, you know, and, and we have to start digging closer to that, then we might stop and ensure we can dig out, you know, a utility line. But in this case, there were none that were close enough where there was any concern with them.
And then the, the only thing that I would also be a bit concerned with, I, I don't remember seeing any, any netting over the drains or the sewer holes on, uh, Ward Place or Pleasant Act. Because if there was very large piles of dirt, you know, raining and runoff and things of that nature, uh, could have been an issue, but.
Again, I, I know in some cases, you, you might want to put some kind of, something over the sewer. I don't know whether netted would be, yeah, I, I, I don't know that term, but netted would, if you'd want to put some solid over, the netting.
Yeah, to be, to prevent the dirt from, the runoff from getting in.
But, um, again, not, not that I'm aware of, I mean, there was nothing placed over that, that I'm aware of. And I don't know that anything was running in there on a regular basis that would have been contaminated. It might have been a, uh, you know, I, can I say for certain there's no soil erosion on the site at all? Uh, no, but I don't know that the pile was going anywhere as far as anything that was contaminated. By the way, there was material, still material along the side of that excavation that is not contaminated and it's above the grade. So, you know, there's, there's not a specific environmental rule that says you have to, um, protect that material from going anywhere because if it's not contaminated, it's not, it's not an environmental issue.
But, and my, my last question to, probably would agree, perception is very important. Especially when you see something that major going on in your, your community and your neighborhood and across from your residence. And that was an extended period of time that that remediation took place. So, you know, if you're not living there every day, you don't get to feel that the neighbors, I, or resident Scott, something that you don't want to hold no more to that point.
No, and I, and I understand that, I mean, when we, when we do the work, this is something we do, you know, every day. And we do it in a way that we're making sure that we're following the D E P's rules. And sometimes, you know, we take, may take it for granted that there's a neighbor that wants to know what's going on. And, you know, if they come out and ask, we, I would certainly answer if I was there. But, uh, you know, we did everything, you know, the way it's, it's typically done and the way it's required to be done.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who have questions for this witness?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the report is dated January tenth, twenty twenty-four, it is eighty-seven pages. Um, we will submit it, it's technical, but it is seventeen hundred.
I'm sorry, it's eight hundred.
Seventeen hundred basis, uh, right, that's why we did not submit it previously, we had a Dropbox, it's technical. Um, I just have one other question of the witness. Mr. Dooney, is it your testimony that you at all times complied with the New Jersey D E P requirements?
Yes. Okay, I have a couple of questions, um, and I want to clarify what we're doing. The, we, everyone keeps saying report, I assume this is the remedial action report that we're discussing?
It's actually titled U S T, um, Site Investigation, Remedial Investigation, Remedial Action Report.
So you've combined both.
We combined all the reports into one, which is very common.
Okay, and, um, the, this, Mr. Mosera, I think, you know, and I've seen these and guests, you can fill up a bookcase very quickly with these. But I think what, if, let me ask a question. Is there somewhere in the report that, that, that easily has a chronology of when the tanks were dug up, when the soil was tested, when you got the results, when the tanks were removed? That, so the members of the public, you know, you, you know, you are uncertain of the dates, I understand why, given your roles at L S R P. But is there something that could be extracted out that we could?
We could create, we could create an exhibit, Mr. Chairman, and submit that exhibit, absolutely.
Okay, and then the other part of that is, um, if this, if the sign is shown in the report, whatever that page picture is and showing that it, the dimensions met the requirements in, um, D E P's regulations.
Happy to do that also.
Okay, and then one question I should have asked before, um, your R A O says you're not dealing with the inside of the buildings, which I understand. So, Mr. Mosera, and what, I don't know who should address this, but I, potentially there's an issue, you know, lead paint, asbestos, all that fun stuff. I assume someone will say something about the, the buildings will be inspected and that material will be.
Yes, I expect.
If there is any contaminants, lead paint, asbestos, et cetera, that it will be removed prior to the building.
Yes, our engineer who will obviously, uh, be testifying at a later date can testify to that, absolutely.
You can go home unless you want, want to sit here for the.
I'd rather not, but if it's.
Maybe, but nothing further, this witness.
Okay. Um, the board, you want to take a break now, you want to, who's, Mr. Mosera, who's here next?
Um, Mr. Garber will, uh, pick up.
I assume he will be a long time.
Oh, we hope not, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna go through some changes. I think the, the, the basics of the application have been discussed.
Board, right now, wait, can power through. We're marching on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have Richard Garber, Mr. Garber was previously sworn, uh, at the last meeting. Mr. Garber, your licenses are still, um, in effect, nothing has changed since the last meeting, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And you've prepared, uh, some modifications to the application, is that correct?
We have.
Okay, and, uh, if you want to begin with your slides and, um, tell the board what was changed and why it has changed, um, for the better in your.
Sure, sure, so.
I mean, is this, is this a new set of slides different from Exhibit A one from the first hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so are we gonna mark this?
We'll, we'll mark this, uh, Mr. Soder as this set presentation, um, as A.
I think we're up to A nine.
I think we're up to A nine, yes.
Okay, and were, were these distributed to the board members now?
These were submitted to the municipality on, uh, Monday and then we actually updated them, uh, this morning and sent them.
So I assume there are no copies, we are observing the screen, is that correct?
Uh, correct, I wasn't informed to bring them, so I apologize for that, yeah. We can do that?
Just so I know where I'm fixing my eyes.
Got it, got it. Um, so I'm gonna be hopefully brief and if I, if someone can, yeah, you could, uh, so I'm gonna go through a couple of context images. Context hasn't changed, Orange Road runs north-south, we have a cemetery to our west. We have, um, uh, R one type of single-family homes to our, um, east as well as to our, um, west, right? So up above and you can see that here. Um, if we just continue going, I'm gonna talk very briefly about, hopefully very briefly, about three items, uh, that we did. If you can continue, please, let's go to the rendering, we'll just start with that. Got one more, please, one more. So this is a, this is an update that we've done, uh, to the, the, the buildings. Now, you'll remember that when we came last time, we were asked about the aesthetics of the project, which one can see that we've addressed, and I'll talk more specifically about them. About the ingress and egress to the site, which we will also address. And, and as Mr. Mosera said, the ingress and egress is now only on Pleasant, right? And I confirmed actually tonight that there is six hundred and fifty plus feet of curb on the other side of Pleasant, we are the only perp cut for the houses to start on that side. And I'll show you the site plan in a second. Um, and we were asked about density. And we have now brought down the density from eight to seven. And what we've done is, and the reason why I start with this image is we still have two pairs of townhomes on Orange, which is a bigger, more dense road. But if you look downward, we have a single townhome, that's the seventh townhome. And what we're referring to that as is a transitional portion of this project that, that translates between the paired townhomes that are on Orange and are on Pleasant. And then we have a single townhome that transitions to single-family houses that are behind us on both sides of the block. And so we think that this is very important and we showed this view very specifically, um, because of that. Um, the other thing that, um, I wanna, so if we, if we actually just go to the next slide, I'll just read some metrics in and everyone can see basically how the climate has changed metrically. And then I will, you know, uh, continue with ourselves. So, so the, the big change is now we have seven townhouses, as I said, instead of eight. Um, the average townhouse size is twenty-five, twenty, two thousand five hundred twenty-one square feet. And that's important, there was a question about why they are so big. It was very important to us and to, um, Janice and her staff about universal design and A D A principles. And, um, making sure that all of these are A D A compliant does take up another couple of hundred feet thereabouts. You can see that the lot coverage, um, and the building footprint coverage have decreased, right? And so the total coverage, which is building footprints, drive aisle and previous parking, has gone down to fifty-nine point six percent. That's a twelve point seven percent decrease. Um, the proposed building footprints and the drive aisle are down to forty-eight point two, which is a twenty-four point one percent decrease. And the building footprints are at twenty-eight point eight percent of the site, right? So these are more in line with the R one numbers. Um, we are still proposing two and a half stories and thirty-five feet. We have, uh, noticed for, uh, uh, variance in the rear, um, which I will show. Uh, and then you can see the number of townhouses we have. And so we've omitted one, there's now eight townhouses and they range in size from, um, twenty, uh, the largest, the smallest one I'll start with is twenty-three eighty-four and that's townhouse six. And the largest one is townhouse one at twenty-seven one three.
You meant seven townhouses, correct?
Seven townhouses, yes. Uh, the number of parking spaces is eighteen, there are fourteen spaces that are two for every townhouse and then four spaces for visitors, including one public accessible A D A space. If we go to the next slide, our variances, I think everyone knows our variances. Uh, we have, uh, a kind of principal use variance, which, uh, in my mind is the primary one. Um, uh, because these are, uh, two-family attached dwellings. We have, um, the setback variances that I went through, uh, in the last hearing, those have not changed. And you'll see those on the site plan. And we still have a, um, proposed building coverage variance, which is, um, we've gotten it fairly close to that twenty-five percent that's required, we're only three point eight percent above, uh, which is, which is important. Um, if we continue moving, please, um, the site comparison setback, uh, graphic you saw before, we can move through that one, uh, to the site plan. Now, the site plan is something that you've seen in our drawings, this has certainly changed. Now, the footprint of the building and the planned layouts of the building have more or less remained. The third floor is reconfigured a little. The third floor is reconfigured a little bit, and I can talk about that. But largely what you'll see is, this is oriented true north or near true north. You'll see that we have one curb cut now, which is on Pleasant, and it's in the rear of the cemetery. That curb cut allows for both ingress and egress and has a little kind of doughnut circle in the middle of the townhouses like we had last time, where you come in and you come out, right? The other, the decision to actually put the single transitional townhouse, which you see up above, up top, on to Ward was because if you actually look at site maps, and I can go back and show you one, you actually see that there are, there's a slight increase in density of the townhouses actually on Pleasant as opposed to Ward. And if you look right next to ours graphically, for the space of four houses on Ward, there are actually five houses on Pleasant. So this is a kind of contextual decision that we made in terms of where to put the transitional townhouse, and you see it here. That setback has gotten very large to the left of that transitional townhouse, and we do have the parking there, which is coded red for visitor parking, as well as that ADA space that you see. Again, for the record, we have 18 parking spaces proposed.
Mr. Garber, you believe that you have taken into account some of the concerns that you heard from the residents on Ward Place, is that correct?
Yes.
So you eliminated the ingress and egress from Ward, but can you further describe what the, that buffer area will be?
Sure. It's a planted buffer area. You see, you know, trees and green there now. We will have other testimony from our civil engineer in terms of specific plantings, but they will be indigenous plants, you know, that we plan to do here.
And that part, the parking area that are in the hot pink, if you will, that will only, there would be no access to Ward Place, correct?
No access to Ward Place. And there's a planted buffer, so you won't even see cars when they're parked there. Those are also visitor spots, so I'm not quite sure how often we will have cars there. We will have a traffic engineer who's here to help to discuss as well. If we go to the next... Oh, and the only thing that I also want to kind of mention here is I actually just did a kind of estimate myself, and so we have this curb cut that's proposed on Pleasant. There is no curb cut on the other side of Pleasant for about 650 feet. So that just is a kind of planted buffer that is Roseville Cemetery, and that's important, you know, I think in justifying where we've put that. There is two-way traffic on Pleasant, but where we've located it. If we can go to the next slide, please. So the next slide is our site plan, and this is just to zoom in. You see the setbacks that we have. We have 24 feet 3 inches from Townhouse 1, which is the upper left at our drive aisle, and then a total of 47 feet, almost 50 feet, of a setback on Ward Place. That was basically what we were talking about. You see that transitional townhouse here, which is the kind of lone townhouse near that setback sign, which is 15 feet on Ward Place. We have a setback of 20 feet on Orange. We have a setback of 20 feet on Pleasant. And then if I, you know, read kind of clockwise around, you see that we have the least amount of density on Ward, where we have a kind of one single townhouse facing it. We have the most amount of density on Orange, which is a more major street with more dense building. And then we have two townhouses facing the cemetery on Pleasant. So we think that this is an improvement to what we had after hearing the board's concerns.
And Mr. Garber, you said earlier, looking at the zoning block, that the rear yard variance has stayed the same, but actually you just testified that the rear yard now is 24.25 feet, only at the unit on the upper left, correct?
Oh, that's correct, yeah. Right, so the...
I'm sorry, it's 37.25, when formerly it was 24.25.
Right, so right now it's... So on the upper right, it's a full 47 feet, and that's what's shown, yeah.
And previously a variance was required. Now that's been eliminated.
On that particular side.
And the variance on the left side has been decreased substantially, correct?
The variance on the left side is, it decreased a little bit, not as much.
Decreased.
Decreased a little bit.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And if we can go next, we can go very quickly through the floor plans. I think the board has a kind of knowledge of the floor plans, where we have a kind of flex unit or office on the ground floor, an ADA bathroom. And then on the upper floors, which you see here, we have a combined living, dining, kitchen space with a bathroom and laundry, and then two bedrooms behind. These are all three-bedroom units. And if we can go to the next plan, please. The upper unit, still the same concept, where this is the en suite with a walk-in closet and a bathroom, as well as a deck. The only thing that's changed here is the size of those units have changed a little bit, just because if you go to the next slide of the pitched roof that we have, and so you see that that master, I shouldn't say that word, the en suite, strike that, please, is 18'7" deep by 12 feet 8 wide, which we think is nice. And we do have a 15-foot step back, setback in the unit itself. I'll show that in the section, which is on the next slide, and we do have that planted buffer around the deck, so that content has stayed. If we go next, you get, this is a revised section, so you actually see how the roof pitches are working. We actually have a nice double-height space still at that stair, which we think is really great. Next. It's just a section cut the other way. I guess it's a little slow. It's just a section cut the other way. It's okay, it's okay. And while that's, while we're waiting for that, I will just talk a little bit about the facades. And I was very happy when we get to the facades, which are next, that we have a kind of pitched roof. Here we are, that, that, you know, when you blur your eyes, I was thinking, oh, wow, we have a kind of up arrow on our buildings. And what's really interesting is, as I was driving around and looking at some houses, I found precedence in Montclair that I have some photos of, that are not in this PowerPoint, actually, but that do exactly the same thing. And so this is a form that is quite, there are quite a number of precedents in town that actually allow for this kind of center hall kind of three, or in this case, two-and-a-half-story form that terminates at a fairly steep roof pitch with roof behind it. Now, in terms of these materials, we have a kind of stone, and you can see this in the slides. A stone, which is the fourth from left image, is a stone that's replaced the brick on the ground floor, the first floor. And then we have two types of hardy panel. We have a vertical batten system, and that is that kind of centerpiece that I was just talking about, which is in color dark gray. And then we contrast that with a lighter color pearl gray with horizontally running siding. You can see that in terms of the line rating. We exaggerated the line rating a little bit in these drawings to make sure that they are clear. If we go next, this continues around, so this is the Pleasant Way elevation that we started with. And then when we go next, you'll see the Ward Place elevation. So this is that, on the right is that transitional single townhome that I spoke about. If we go down one more, you'll see the Orange elevation, and that is the most...
Next slide?
Next, next slide, please, yes. There we go, yeah. And so this is the Orange Road elevation, where you see the two pairs that exist here. Again, same materials. You will note, I'll show you in the axonometric. And then if we go next, you just see the rear of the units in the next elevation drawing, and that is just showing the garage entries and that road loop, which we think makes sense. And one of the things you can see here specifically on the right units, this is a kind of 3D cut elevation, is that 15-foot setback. So before the roof pitches, picks up and pitches, we have a 15-foot setback that is there. I think there's a, use the pointer the guy asked for before. I can't actually point onto the screen. It doesn't, it reflects. But you can see it. Would anyone like me to come up and show that, or you understand what I'm talking about?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Garber, do you agree with Ms. Tally's inclusion that it's three stories from the rear?
Well, so the initial counsel that we received was that the third story would have to be 40% or less. We are somewhere around that 40%, admitted them somewhere slightly over that, one or two were slightly under that. I think it's safe to notice for that, and just suggests it's a variance condition. I do think that the form of these townhouses are appropriate for the context. If we go next, you'll actually see the context elevations. And when you blur your eyes, it's sometimes, you know, almost kind of hard to see our... I mean, you can obviously see where ours are, but we are borrowing from the more traditional forms on all three sides of the project, which we think is actually quite successful. You'll see that we're using white trim around most of the features on our buildings, which is consistent with, I think, just about every structure that is included in here. Next slide, please.
Mr. Garber, you took the neighbors' wishes to heart, did you not?
I did. We spoke quite a lot with the neighbors, and we had, as I said, a meeting on June 12th. I had some other correspondence with a couple of neighbors here and there, leading up to that June 12th meeting, and think that we've reimagined this appropriately, given their wishes. And large exterior details are part of our drawing set. Those haven't changed, but if you go to the next slide, please. And this is our second-to-last slide. You see that we have the way that this is organized. This is the axonometric, looking sort of north and east. And so you see more density on Orange, less density on Ward in the back, and a kind of what I'll call a middle density on Pleasant that faces the cemetery, Roseville Cemetery. We are showing very low gated fences in the front of the buildings, right? And so that is part of the landscaping features. And then we have a six-foot board-on-board fence that is not shown in this, but it's shown in our elevations and noted, that separates our site from the neighbor sites, and a board-on-board fence is very appropriate for that use. And I will end, next slide, with the rendering again, which is from the corner of Ward and Orange looking south.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Kowal, do you have any questions?
Well, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you. We hope you like it.
Interesting design. I think it does respond to a lot of the questions that people have publicly as well as the board itself. I had a question about the unit that is on the corner of Orange Road. And so that one is, I think, a little smaller.
So the unit on the corner of Orange and Ward, if you want to put up Slide 13 is the question. It's, that is Townhouse 05, and the size of that unit is, let me just get it so I can be very specific here. You asked for Ward, right? The lower right-hand corner?
Yes.
Townhouse 5, and so that one is, if I go back to this, Townhouse 5 is 2494 square feet. I was Townhouse 6, I'm sorry, is 2344 square feet. And if you remember, that one, and that will not be the affordable, by the way, but that is the one that, when I was talking before about trying to make the U-shape, that because we have a tighter than 90-degree, it was, we, it was very difficult to determine radius for parking in that one. So that one has one exterior space in front of it, and one of the other spaces is how that would work. And that exterior space would probably be the spaces in between the two, right in the center of Orange.
So the, it has a smaller deck on the roof, right?
It does, yeah, yeah. And that's also a function of the floor.
So the question I have was really relevant to the parking, you know, for that one. And that is, so you have the parking, that parking space that is there is just a standard parking space, correct?
As opposed to...
It's not EV.
No. So the way that the EV, so we are required by state law to have 10% of the parking as EV. That's 148 spaces. We are proposing that all the other townhomes basically get an EV, so we're above the baseline requirement by, you know, quite a lot.
That's, I mean, that's what I noted was, was all EVs do have access to an EV parking space. And I wondered why you didn't just make that one a space.
It's certainly easy enough to...
What else was supposed to be on the outside?
We would have no, I don't, to be honest with you, I'm not quite sure that that level of detail was really kind of thought through. It would be no problem to mount an exterior, I mean, I have an exterior charger for my car, you know. It would be no problem to mount an exterior charger on the side of that unit and provide. And that's something that would be worked out with the, through the HOA, as these are condos, basically, yeah. So that could absolutely be provided for. It would be encouraged, by the way.
We could modify, we could agree.
I would like to absolutely encourage that.
I do have a question about in terms of the, you know, when you need the garage. I mean, I just happened to hear maybe they need to put a whole machine to go and hopefully set a certain scenes where someone can give their garage that pot fired.
Yeah.
So the question is, what kind of protections built into the system so that gives the unit, I don't know what caused it to fire?
Yeah.
You know, if it all heats up, it wouldn't.
So generally, you think that there would be a fuse that would trip if the unit got too hot, that it could happen. And that's generally, I'm not an electrician, but I can tell you, just because I happen to be a, I've been a pilot on there for the last almost four years, that when you're charging in closed spaces, you should only render charger at 50%. And that's very published best practice. I cannot tell you how many people do that or not, but, you know, typically they overheat when they're running full passes.
Yeah, obviously the concern is, you know, how to minimize the potential, you know.
I mean, these will be constructed basically with, you know, two-hour exterior walls for separation and so forth. So there are building code requirements that will limit the spread of fire, for sure. That's what safety and welfare are supposed to do. You know, and I think you bring up a concern that is a more general concern, not one specifically about our project, right? I mean, this is something that now, as more of these types of vehicles come online, they're welcome, in my opinion. You know, these are things that we ought to be kind of thinking about.
So can we go to the rendering that shows all of the...
The perspective or the axonometric?
Well, what I'm specifically looking for is the rendering that has all of the terraces.
Oh, yeah, so that would be Slide 25, please. There you go.
So what you've done is you have maintained the integrity of having all of that, so recreational, entertaining space contained within this unit, we'll just call it a unit, as opposed to facing out to the major streets.
So there are front yards?
No, no, but I guess what I'm really getting at here is, is that since you now made a public way, you only access it to the property. And of course, on the other side, a public way is the cemetery. And so you never know when there may be activity on the left side of that cemetery. How old those plots are and how many, much activity there might be. But you wouldn't really be in concern about somebody's having, you know, a party up there.
Right. I understand. So we've taken the opportunity to sculpt the roof pitches to basically create a separation, like a material buffer, between those outdoor patios that every unit gets and any of the rights-of-way, which would include the Pleasant Way and the Cemeteries.
And so that works for the cemetery, and it certainly works for Orange Road and for Ward Place. But what about on the, on the, on this back side? I think there are, you know, there are houses on this back side here. Let me just walk you through the point.
Sure. You're saying the side?
No, just up here. There are houses here, right? I mean, they're private residences.
Right.
So what view will they have of people enjoying leisure time on their, their patios? I mean, is there, will they, will, they feel that this sort of encodes upon their sense of privacy or?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. And, and the reason why is, so first of all, we know that we are on the left side 24 feet, three inches away, and on the right side, 47 feet away, right? So that's a substantial distance, right? The other thing is there's a board-on-board fence, six feet tall, and then there's planting. And particularly on Ward, there's this large lawn, I must, a landscaped area. And then keep in mind that there will be a buffer of a two-foot plant box around the patios themselves. And if privacy is really a concern of the board, we can make sure that the planting is, you know, a little bit higher there. But I, I don't anticipate, look, I can't tell people how to use their spaces, right? It's not like what I, what I do. But, but I don't, I don't think it's, I think primarily the setback that we've been able to achieve will lay the majority of that concern.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's, it's important to know because, I mean, the, the design that you've come up with is unique for Montclair, as fair to say, right? And, and if, if a design is successful, it ends up, you know, ultimately, you know, somebody else will choose to repeat it.
I see, right?
And so, and so the, you know, the question is, you know, how do we ensure that, you know, when, when there is a neighborhood like this full construction, that it doesn't ultimately end up violating the integrity of the privacy of all the neighbors? That's the sort of, the question I'm raising and hopefully the assurance that we can, that we can gain. And you're right, of course. I mean, you know, some people party harder. So there's, there's, there's no 100% in terms of equation, if you're trying to minimize the potential.
I would say that that, the distances are significant, more significant than we've moved on. And, and you know, certainly if you look at the fabric that is to the north, to the east of us, excuse me, the west of us, the houses are a lot closer together than the buffer that we're creating just by open space. And then you add in the board-on-board fence and the planting and so forth. So I, I feel comfortable with that.
And, and just finally, just in terms of refuges, where, where it's at?
Everybody is bringing it out to the street.
And, and so they'll all roll it out to Pleasant, Pleasant Way?
To, everyone will roll it out to the point of collection of their property. So I think that there will be, I think that there will be pickup collection points on Pleasant, on Orange, and on Ward.
Does this mean it's a full trash?
It is a full trash, yes. There was a concern last time, I'm not sure if you were here last time, but there was a concern last time of the, the trash truck driving into and disturbing some of the neighbors by being inside this lot. And so one of the things that was discussed on May 1st when we were last here is just having individual pickup for each of the townhouses, which I think we concur to, we agree to.
Just one final, just one final question. That is, I, I noticed the concept that is part of the design is, will we have the assurance that the fencing will remain uniform throughout the property moving forward? Or will each homeowner have the freedom to?
It, it will be built as part of the overall design intent. I'm sure we can add something to the HOA or, you know.
We could, the association, there will be a standard that will have to be, that all owners will have to abide by. You know, things as specific as exterior signs, you know, signs in windows and control it as much as we reasonably can.
Sure. And we agree.
I'm, I'm not familiar with, with a lot of fencing in the neighborhood. So I don't know to the extent that fencing sort of is within or not within sort of the character of the neighborhood. But I just would, once again, sort of lift that up as something to take a look at. Not to say that you shouldn't do fencing, but whatever the fencing ultimately is, if it's not sort of normative in the neighborhood, then to make sure that whatever you design still complements how people have chosen to present their properties within this larger.
I think that's agreeable, for sure.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on the refuge. Do we, the first plan we have that, that cut through through wards is a truck to come in and pick up garbage. Are we still having garbage being picked up in the back?
No, there is no truck coming in.
Just, I mean, just for our own sake, maybe just think about where we want the garbage to go. Because I can just see all three cans piled up in the front here and just kind of creating some sort of chaos. So just maybe some thought about where we want to go with that.
And for the record, our, our initial solution was to create a dedicated location where everyone took it.
Yeah, I remember.
We heard that that wasn't going to be supported, so.
So are you saying everyone's responsible to take their trash to the curb?
Just like any homeowner, just like any other homeowner.
And we could, Mr. Crawford, regulate that by condominium documents as well, that each owner has to be, you know, a certain area for their trash.
Yeah, just, just think about it. I mean, just, just like a poor sight down there, if I get to see something.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Simon.
First, I think you did a great job with the revisions and maintaining your artistic vision, so good job with that. Couple of quick questions. For unit five to, that turned into parking space 11. Is that possible? It seems extremely tight.
Unit five?
Into parking space 11. To be able to.
No, 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 there's total turning, yeah, I see where you're doing it. Yeah, there's, there's, there's adequate turning radius. So that is slide 13. So I think the question is whether or not this can be done, and the answer is it can. Through here. And we have a traffic engineer here who can certainly speak to that as well.
Okay. Oh, we missed that one. Trash truck answered. And which is now the affordable unit?
It will be either 04 or 05. Yeah, it's open to discussion also, though.
Which two, which two?
04 or 05.
Okay. So eliminating that townhouse did not eliminate the affordable unit?
Absolutely not, that's required. And, and, and for the record, that, that what we were doing last time is if you remember, the affordable unit was one, was one of the constrained ones on the site. We now have, if you look at this, we have a general townhouse type, which is 2, 4, 5, and 7? Is that right? Yeah, 2, 4, 5, and 7. It'll be one of those. And I'm guessing it's probably going to be either 4 or 5, but we need to determine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will second the comments from my colleagues. This is definitely an improved design, so.
Thank you.
Following up on, on the previous comment about the affordable unit, 4 or 5, are these any, the footprint compared to the other units? Because on the, on the previous iteration, it was the smallest unit, the affordable unit.
Right. Now it's the standard unit.
The standard, yeah. As far as the H-back condensing units for each unit, has that changed?
No change.
No change.
Except there's one less.
Okay, no worries.
Mr. Church.
All questions I had have been asked and answered.
Ms. Sarah's.
I have other questions. Do you know the average setbacks are for the existing homes on Ward and Pleasant? How what you're proposing compares?
Yeah, yeah. So I will not be able to give you exact, but if you look at slide 6, this actually shows the general conditions of the area. And what you see is that we are at 15 feet. The closest we are is on one place, 15 feet. Most of these houses are a range, but some of them are less than 15 feet. Some of them go back about 60 or 17 feet. But we're certainly consistent within the range of particularly here. And while we're up here, the only, the other thing that I, just to make sure that everyone is, is understanding what I said, the double unit here came from the idea that within this space, we have four units versus five units, right? And so when you add them together, we basically have, including ours, six in the row, it's six in the front. Right? So we're trying to be contextual in the way we're kind of thinking about that as well.
On Pleasant Way, how do you do those setbacks compared to what you're proposing?
On Pleasant Way, they are, and if you, if you look at, so if you remember, if you kind of see it's, it's, I have basically the same answer. But if you look at our, our site plan drawing, which is, or the, let's see which one is it? The, I'm sorry, slide 13, which is our proposed first-floor plan drawing. We have 20 feet proposed on the Pleasant Way. And what's neat about that is we have a little bit more green space in the front. And so not only are we creating some parity with the variation that happens sort of east of us, but we also are, can't clue, what is it, creating a very large green space in Roseville, right across the street.
While we're on this slide, what do you mean by public ADA space? That space, I would imagine that's only for residents or their guests.
It's for, so, so the way that ADA parking is, is governed in the building code is there are numbers per parking space. So there's X required for every Y number of parking spaces. We are required to have only one here. And what we've done is we decided to make that a public or guest space as opposed to putting it inside one of the units. If one of the, if someone in the unit actually needs that space, we'd be able to work that out through the HOA.
But it's for residents or?
Anyone who's, if you're a resident, it'd be a guest.
And then this circular road that you have in the back, can you, like, are there going to be perchets or driveway or?
No, there's nothing. So it's, it's. So this, the way that this is coded, and I think this hopefully is clear in our plan, the way you see it, is this is paving, asphalt concrete paving. These all around are pervious pavers. So the pervious pavers, while they still count for coverage, they do perform in terms of stormwater management. And so the idea is that this is all level. There's no grade change. You just drive above the impervious paper to the pervious paper into your driveways.
And how about like the non-driedaway area?
Oh, this is, I'm sorry. So that's green space right there. And you can see that, it's a little, right? So there's a, there's a kind of little green island here where we have a condensing unit, which was asked about. We have two condensing units here in this green island. A green island here with a condensing unit, and the two little green islands right there.
Are between lines, I'm sorry, 4 and 5, that's a guest spot or is it?
This is, this is, this would be dedicated to Townhouse 6. Because it's close, right? So we have two spaces dedicated to Townhouse 6. We're in a standard here, in a standard.
I think that's a spot next to Townhouse.
This would be for Townhouse 3, because if you see, because of this weird kind of angle that we resolved in this one, which makes it a nicer, larger unit, it's difficult to get a second parking in here, so that part is.
And then the reasons for the culprits?
We, we, they're, they're not really proposed. We show them as a part so that it's proof that we can achieve universal design standards if we needed to have someone living down there for the, we live well in there.
So what you provide, like utility connections?
They'll just be handcuffs. We've called that a flex room, you know, it could be, you know, there, there's a number of different uses. It could be an office, it could be a guest room, it could be, it could be a living space, a full living space if needed. If there was a kind of universal design.
And then I'm sure there's a landscape or question?
There's a civil engineer who will testify a little bit to it. And as I said, we're just, you know, in general, we're, we're very cognizant of using indigenous species. We did have an arborist come and look at the trees and help us in terms of what remained via the survey and so forth. It turns out that a lot of the trees on the site were not indigenous species and they're going away if they haven't gone away already.
Do you know the, kind of the, the chore proposed heights, like the trees along the rear?
I'll leave that, I'll leave that.
Mitch McDonough will testify to that, our planner.
Thank you.
Ms. Grant.
So I think the determination on how to handle trash collection was good because before it was, it was proposed in the corner of the lot. And then there were some concerns about if there would maybe like rodents. So I think each individual homeowner, a townhouse owner, taking their trash out is, is good. The total building coverage decrease I thought was an improvement. Aesthetically, I thought it was an improvement. The color scheme, I like the gray and also just the redesigning consideration for the, the context of the neighborhood. So I, I agree that is an improvement as far as aesthetics. As far as the use of the space overall, given the climate of housing, I think it is what it is. I think that there's definitely a housing crisis and every available space. Ideally, you, you would want to kind of be part of that solution for, especially in this town and just New Jersey in general. And so I think though the, there was a decrease, it is a, it is a generous size. But there is an affordable unit and, you know, but that's the only thing I'll have to say is that it will, you know, that it's a, this, for that, for that, this big space, it accommodates a, a small amount of people with a huge, like, housing need.
The third story, I'm a little puzzled by. You're indicating some of them are complying and are with a 40%, and some of them are almost complying. And I guess why are they not all complying if you're close? And which ones are and which ones aren't?
So, so the standard, that's a fine question. I mean, we, we decided basically because of the, we, we think that it's important to have a nice, large bedroom up there. We have a 15-foot setback that we're maintaining on every unit. And because there are, some, some units are larger than the other, than others, you know, it just seemed logical. We think that the form is appropriate. We acknowledge that that third-floor space may be a little bit bigger. We feel strongly that the size of that bedroom up there is appropriate for a unit this size. And so in consultation with our team and the owner, we just, we decided to notice for a variance.
That's not answering my question. I understand the notice. I do this and when in doubt, you notice for a variance. But I'm trying to understand which units actually do require a variance. Or are you saying they are all conforming? Or if we impose a condition, we did not approve the variance for a third story? What does that do to the project?
It would make the bedrooms smaller. And part of the reason why I don't have an exact number for you, and I think it's a very valid question, my bad, is because we have roof pitches. And so there, we, we haven't gone through and actually figured out habitable space under those roof pitches as a kind of silhouette. I mean, you could do that. But I do think that the size of the bedroom, which as I said before is 18.7 by 12.8, is, is a nice, is a nice-sized bedroom for up there. I mean, if you, you know, we did to, if, if, if the thought of the board was that it should be smaller, I'm sure we can consider accommodating that. But I, I do feel like units like this, in terms of similar townhouse models. uh, in terms of, um, similar townhouse models, uh, have bedroom, bathroom, closet, potential access to outdoor spaces, which is what we have up here.
I'm, I'm not saying, because I don't have enough information to say what way or another. But before I am going to vote for a variance on the third story, I want to know what it is and why it is. And some of that maybe Mr. McDonough can pick up, but I, I don't, I want to know how many units need the variance, why, the extent to which they need the variance, and why they need the variance. And it's ultimately, an expedition dealing with that. So it's clear what we're doing and not leaving it to the constructions, the planning office and the construction code official to figure out whether you're complying with what we approved.
And Mr. Sullivan wants that as a resolution as well. So we'll, we'll, we'll come back with that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
The, um, related to this and, um, because I like being consistent from one application to the next. And this is harsh more for probably Mr. McDonough than you is how, how did the size of these units compare to the size of the units in the neighborhood? And then further, you know, you were asked, um, about this comparing the setbacks here to setbacks on Ward and Pleasant Way. And I'm assuming Mr. McDonough will address that in his testimony as to be consistent. Right? But I think last question for you is, do you have, um, an elevate, a west elevation that shows what people? I understand you'll have a six-foot fence, so shorter, shorter people like me underground are not going to see over. But, you know, looking from their houses, what are, what are they actually going to see when they look to the east?
Yeah. Okay. So that would be putting a six-foot fence on slide 22. So we can do that.
Well, it's, I, um, I'm trying, I want to, do you have anything that shows the west elevation? That's I guess what I really ask.
We do. It's slide 22. You're saying, you're, you're, you're talking about looking into the donut.
Looking from the houses on Ward and Pleasant that are adjacent, what they're gonna see?
Yeah, right. So if you go to slide, that's it. And except you have to imagine that there's a fence there. We cut that elevation in front of the fence.
Also too, I think it's important to show the plantings as well as whatever you're planting on further.
So, I'm as, assuming this is looking at what's on the left is what's on the Ward Place side and what's on the right is on Pleasant.
So we have no windows looking at the neighbors, by the way. Right? That's something that I felt to say before. And that was a design decision. We face out and we really tried to have glazing opening to the rights of way. Uh, but we don't actually have any glazing that faces the neighbors directly behind us.
Not sure if that's good or bad. I normally, I look out by windows of my house. I see windows in adjoining houses.
They're, from a light in air point of view, these, these units get funny. So I, I, I would rather, you know, it sounded like there was some concern about us being.
Well, I, I, you know, I think and I'm kind of encouraging the neighbors if they have views on this when they testify, what their issues are, if they have no issues.
I, I should also just say, and if you, you know, refer to our plans, those are spaces that are typically bathrooms that just stair over there. You know, we do have the dining room at the ends, which could be an opportunity for a window. But a lot of the service spaces are pushed to those walls. The service components, I should say.
And the affordable housing, you said, I guess either units four or five, is that correct? Is, I'm not sure if the board cares. Ultimately, you're gonna make a decision or is that for us to decide or?
I'd like to make it in consultation with our client, our team and Ms. Tally's office. But we are, you know, we're fine to take a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, the thought that we had, just in general, and as Richard Barber said, well, any unit that the board desires, we could do. Um, four and five, Richard has called them standard. They both have internal parking. Um, they're not, and they're within the community. Whereas if you take unit seven.
But I, no, I, I, I'm not questioning that. I think those were wise units to choose between.
Okay.
And at least at this point, I don't have a view on that. I don't know if other board members do. I don't know if the public does. But I, okay, then, I, well, I, this will be my last question.
Sure.
The, um, on the five units that have the two garage spaces in the building, I'm curious why only one of them is labeled as an EV space when normally, when people are putting in the, the charging equipment, they put it between two spaces. And are you really doing it so that potential will be for one space only? Or is it going to be set up so if they have two EV cars, you know, it's not adding a plus to you, it's one?
So, so, so typically, I, you know, and so as I have a lot of insight on this, uh, as a, as a long time EV driver, relatively long-term EV driver. Um, so typically the home charging kits, the, um, the cables are long enough that if you park two cars in a garage, you could charge either one. So, um, we don't necessarily mean to feed the EV charging device to.
Well, that's why, I mean, that's been my observation in the world is that they are set up to charge two adjacent cars.
Right. So typically the way that it, and when I testify on other boards, we're typically asking, show us the spaces that have the EV charging capability. So you can find the spaces. But in this case, because this is a garage, wherever it is, it will have access to both cars.
So, I mean, I, I think the plans are misleading that way. I mean, I, if they, both spaces in those five garages will have access.
Through a single EV charging.
Yes. And it, and yes, we certainly make clear that you're putting in one device, not two. But I, you know, I just, it's a little puzzling. You're labeling it standard when clearly it could be charged.
So, I, I can add, sorry, if I could, so how would you like it, how would you like us to write that?
I could, with Mr. Sullivan, I think we got it.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is that both units will have access to A chargers.
And we'll show the EV charger, we'll state that both are standard sized spaces with a note, both unit, both standard spaces will have access to.
Whatever, to make clear you're, we're not putting in two in each garage.
Got it. Okay.
So what about unit six with the external parking? So they're not required to have an EV?
So the EV designation is by DCA standards, 8% of the total number of parking. Right? So we have 18, I mentioned this before, we have 18 spaces where required by DCA standards to put in 1.8 chargers, round it to two. We have, um, seven chargers, six chargers, actually. And we talked about adding a seven, which would be, um, against the outside of the building for Townhouse. And so we're, we're fine with that. And, you know, it just, I, I, I love the fact that this board is getting into that level of detail. I mean, I, I think it's great. And, and, um, it's certainly something that can be accommodated very easily without significantly changing anything.
But as far as you know, it, it's not a building standard that it has to, it has to be, you know, building, construction has to have, be capable for every unit. Like if you decided not to put an EV station there.
The, the, the requirement is they have to have two EV chargers on site is what the law requires. They're going above that.
Right.
I think in terms of marketing, that's probably a good idea. Are there members of the audience who have questions for this witness? And again, it's just questions on his architectural testimony. Forward to you.
State your name again, please.
First name, Jack Hubert, Ward Place, Montclair. Is it? I have a question. When you were talking about, you saw the design of this design, this new design in Montclair. May I ask you where? And was it a single family home or was it a unit like this?
Uh, it was a number of single family homes that had a, a, a center hall orientation. And that's what I was suggesting. I don't have a specific address, I have some photos. But, uh, you know, generally what I was interested in finding are moments broadened in the context of this new development that we could kind of refer to, not copying, but just as a, as a reference to allow for some kind of contextual response to what we're presenting.
Okay. Other thing I wanted to ask you, um, it still does not conform to our neighborhood, in, in my opinion. But I wanted to ask you, at what cost will these homes be compared to our homes? I noticed that my house is completely missing. I live in a ranch, a very small ranch. How high did you say they would be? 35 feet?
Yes.
That would, oh, I'm sorry, it's a phone call. I'm sorry, business partner. I live in a ranch. 35 feet above my house will be in my backyard.
Where is your address?
Five Ward Place. We conveniently got off of the, um, the site there when we showed the initial. I didn't see my house at all. My house was a blank space.
If you go to slide 23, please. Uh, if we did, I'm sure we will look at that and we can get it in there. But this is a survey, I believe, of all the addresses around us.
Well, where am I? I'm across the street.
So if you're across the street, we don't, we're showing, this is an elevation of, so typically the way that you present a kind of contextual drawing like this is you include, um, houses that, houses that are immediate, no, no, houses that are immediately adjacent, the same side of the street. Because that's how you, this comes.
But if you show the houses that are on the other side of the street in the initial, some of those homes are down the street. You showed it in comparisons in size, but I am one of the few ranch homes in Montclair. There are only four ranch homes.
Okay.
35 feet will dwarf my home. You will be in my backyard. You will have full view into my type of space. Did you think about that?
I did, I did. And, um, you know, as this graphic clearly shows, and I testified when I first, there is a wild diversity of home types here.
Yes.
And I think that what we're trying to do is tap into the kind of sphere of what we find significant and find a way to blend in a little bit more than we would.
Well, it does blend in slightly, one of the different parts, but still not to the point where I feel living across the street on this might be something I want to do. One other question. Um, you say that Pleasant has less density. Why did you not put more density on the Pleasant side where there's less people living?
That's not what I said. I said on, if, if you go to slide six, all I was doing was counting a sample of houses that were within the 200-foot radius. And, um, what I noted was that we have a kind of more tightly packed group of houses on, um, Ward than we do on Pleasant. And so what we did was we equal, as a, as a way of determining, as soon as we went down from eight to seven, we had a knock number. Means that someone had to be a kind of odd person out in terms of our grouping of pairs, which I think works appropriately. And what we decided is by looking at that density, to put the single house on Ward, right? All that transitional unit and the double houses on Pleasant. Because if you actually counted the number of dwelling units within that 200-foot radius, based on that calculus, you have six houses, including ours, on both sides of the street. That's, that's the amount.
Next question that I have for you, um, the excess parking, when you're talking three bedroom homes, you're talking two parents, two children, possibly four cars, and you only have a space for, um, two cars per each unit, correct?
Uh, yes. And, and that's based on, that's based on, um, the standards that we have adopted. And I think we will have a topic in the near, most specific.
Well, we, well, we have a very situation where a lot of the streets on the south end are very small. We have a pickup truck. We can't even get out of our driveway if someone is parked directly across the street. Did you consider when people don't want to go to their parking spaces, where are they going to park? Because many times people don't want to go to their parking space. They want to park in front of their unit. There are four units on Ward. We can't even get out without, um,
I don't know.
Asking a neighbor to move to get out of our driveway.
People, people live and telling me that we are. And I feel like the parking way out here is adequately distributed even our side.
Well, you don't feel that way, but, um, we live there and it's, it's pretty tight and small. Um, when you were looking at sites, did you consider any other sites, like maybe the other side of town? Where there's been much less, um, density, much less building go up on that side? The last time something was built was Christopher Port. I'd say they would never repeat that. But this looks like Christopher Port to me. Did you consider any other sites besides this site? This is an honorable.
So I'm, I'm helping develop them. So I'm, I'm, I was given a site and I said, this, you know, I'd propose, well, I feel it's appropriate. So that's my job.
Okay. I have one more question. The garbage, on garbage days on Ward Place, those take the garbage out. The wind blows, it's everywhere. Everyone's garbage is all over the street. You're saying that they're gonna be bringing out their garbage cans on windy nights? And I am usually one of the few people who go out and pick up all the garbage that comes rolling down the street.
I do have an answer for that. What we can do is we can specify in the homeowners agreement that we will have a closable, lockable, uh, trash container. That one wheeled out, it won't, will be not susceptible to pollution. We can, we'll have that.
And will there be a super on this, in this, in this unit? These are co-ops.
There, there won't be. They're not co-ops.
So are there HOA fees and things like that?
Uh, yeah, beyond, beyond my scope, I think there are, yes.
Okay, so that's very confusing. Who is going to be there governing breaks, things that don't work, garbage on streets?
So the way that an HOA works.
A unit being assigned to someone to live there to take care of this property, who will maintain this property?
So the HOA will have a management company. That's typically how it works.
Yes. I understand. We have a five-family next to us and there's no one there. No one manages these multi-family homes. But you will, you will have someone living on the premises, possibly?
Definitely. You said there'd be a management company that, that generally, um, there's one of, probably a handful of local management companies that manage properties like this.
Well, those of us who live near multi-family homes, and I have five families next to me and a couple down the street, they don't manage them. So I, I would trust that the board possibly think about having someone maintain this property once you build it, once it's been approved and all of that. Personally, as experience, no one maintains.
Mr. Chairman, we would agree if there's approval to have a, uh, at the condo association, we'd have to have a, um, private management company.
Living?
Run, no, no, run the, uh, run the associate, run the association rather than do it internally. We would agree to that.
Well, I own a co-op in Lot and Youngers. There is someone living on the premises, two supers on the premises to take care of. So that it's always maintained and thoughtful. The neighbors don't have to do it. I just personally don't want to have to be going out picking up anybody else's garbage. Also, the condenser unit you said is like five of them? No factor? Will they be, will they be running? Is this an air conditioning unit?
So they run in when it's hot up?
Yes.
They are extremely quiet, hot quality. Impossible that we're doing.
Those are my best instincts.
Thank you.
I have one more question. You keep saying there's recreational space. Are you aware that there's a beautiful park across the street? With a running track, playgrounds?
I think outdoor space though is, is really important when, when dealing with a site like this. But yes, of course. And, and I hope that folks that ultimately will be taking advantage of all those.
Thank you.
Just one question about the recreational space. It's not being programmed. It's just green space, right?
It's a, in the front, it's a lawn and in the rear, it's a deck.
So there's no, there's no.
There's no amenities.
Any other members of the public who have questions for this witness? Mr. Scott?
William Scott. I live a 23-seater apartment. As I mentioned, I have a property at 382 Hunter, which lived there for 38 years. You, you mentioned that the. You mentioned that the unit number six is a townhouse unit, but it's actually a single-family home.
Is that correct? I said it's a, so no, that's not what I said. What I said was that the strategy of the units, if you remember this from the first hearing, our units are paired, so we have two townhomes together. But when we went from eight to seven, decreased the density, seven is an odd number. So we would have three pairs, one, two, three pairs, and then one single. In looking at the context and looking at the density from the graphic that's up on the screen and so forth, and thinking about how circulation works, we decided that the single unit would be on Ward, and we'd have a double unit on Pleasant.
And I understand your explanation, but that unit on Ward Place is basically a single-family home.
They're all townhomes.
By definition, that is a single-family home because there's not another unit attached to it.
No, because it could be a detached house.
Well, it is a single-family unit, family home.
That may be your opinion, but the way that this is defined in our development application and the way that we have defined based on your land, the land development ordinance of the municipality is that this is a detached townhouse, and there are three pairs of actual houses where there are two houses each.
Does that unit, does it have its own separate lot?
No.
Then what else is connected to that if it's got side doors on each side?
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject here, it's a condominium form of ownership. So the condominium association will own the roof, will own the exterior, will own the stairs, et cetera. The unit owner will own the interior. So it's not, it's not a standalone, ownable structure because the condominium association, as I just said, owns the exterior, owns the roof, et cetera. So it's not, it would not fall within the definition of a single-family home.
So the unit owner of that one unit that you're talking about, they purchased that, they own the interior of the unit, and then they have a percentage share of the common elements. So it doesn't matter if it's condominium form of ownership, whether it's one unit or two units attached, or three units attached, or four units attached. So the form of ownership is going to be a condominium form of ownership. Not, that unit is not going to be a fee simple detached single-family home.
No. Overall, this is not a bad thing because I think one of the members said that this type of development could bring a new style to Montclair from the development staff. Even though it may be a part of the townhouse complex, but it gives you the flavor of that one unit could be considered, not technically, but as a single-family house, but you could have other developments that fall in this category.
Right. So I refer to that one as the transitional unit because it breaks from the pairs and it convert, and it transitions to the single-family homes that are directly to the...
Now, with that being said, there could have been another single unit on Pleasant, which could have been a part of a transitional phase from the single-family houses on Pleasant into this development as well. But, you know, you've got seven, so, you know, you'll live with that at this point in time, but there was a possibility because I think I made a request of not having eight units, but having six units. Okay, which you chose to do seven, which you, the developers, so you have that option to do. But that was also a request that was made, myself being a resident in that particular area. And it still would have met the inclusionary zoning ordinance, which was set aside for reportable housing at that point as well. I think I specifically made that comment. Just one other thing. With the garbage situation, bringing that amount of garbage to Orange Road, as a matter of fact, on the corner of Pleasant and Orange Road, is a bus stop. I'm not sure, and also having a fence, is there going to be an entrance and the exit through those fenced and areas to bring the garbage to the curb?
Yes, of course. And the bus stop is actually on the other side of the street?
Well, there's a bus stop on both sides.
Right, but there's not a bus stop on the corner of our site?
There's a bus stop on the corner of Pleasant and, and there's a bus stop on the other side of Pleasant and Orange Road.
Right.
Little east side of the street.
Right, but not on our side. In other words, it's not here, it's across the street.
Pleasant and Orange Road.
Right.
But on, in front of cemetery, not in front of our site.
But the bus has some, he's got to pull in.
We're not, but people are not queuing in line in front of our site. They're across Pleasant, okay?
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
The affordable unit, just one more question. The affordable unit, in regards to the way that the inclusionary zoning ordinance is written, the affordable unit has to be comparable to the market rate unit. So there'll be some determination to make sure that it's very close to the market rate unit at this point. If you finally follow the guidelines in the IZO, which the salary is going to help you do that, or you'll know which ones don't.
I'm going to help her. She's going to tell us.
Exactly. Give you the document, you finally follow the rules with the places. Thank you.
Any? Is Rush?
So I guess my first question, do you want me to say my whole name again and all of that? Leonor Rush, fifteen Ward Place. Okay. So first question is, did the, after the prior, or the initial discussion, initial planning meeting, did you and the property owner discuss the possibility of any other configuration other than the townhome configuration? Was the single-family model discussed at all?
No. And part of the reason why is because subdividing this property with this odd shape would be very, it would create a tremendous amount of non-conformance.
And I guess it would, would non-conformance and would it also be less, I don't know, the economic gain would be less? And then you also mentioned that you had follow-up discussions with some of the neighbors?
Just as, just to, just from a point of organizing, to make sure that people got notices. There was no...
In June, you said after the first meeting, right?
So we did, we did a community meeting in, I think, March. We had a hearing May first. We made changes based on the comments that we received by both this board and the public. I can't remember if you were there or not, but it was a long meeting. And then we had a follow-up meeting on June 12th at four hundred R's. I live in the building itself.
Who did you notify?
We notified...
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I, my law office notified every person that was by letter that was on the two-hundred-foot list that we had used for formal notification.
I did not receive a notification.
You've run the list. I apologize for that. But it was sent to all the neighbors. It was asked to please tell your neighbors that everyone was invited. So I can, you know, for the record, I did send that to everybody on the two-hundred-foot list.
The same way you sent the first initial list?
Mm-hmm.
Certified mail?
No, it wasn't certified because this was not the...
The first thing was certified mail.
Yes.
This June 12th meeting...
Was just a general letter, everybody?
Which I never received.
I'm sorry.
So if you had me for the, for the certified letter, I should have been on this one as well?
You were definitely on it.
I was not because I would have received it.
You were on the list because I used the same list. Now, I can't verify that you received it, but, I mean, it was mailed and...
I can say with one hundred percent...
No one's questioning whether, I believe that you didn't get it.
But I believe it. It was never mailed to me because just like I, I'm just saying. But this is about questions, right?
Okay. Is Ms. Sarah, Ms. Bush?
Thank you.
I didn't...
Rush, Ms. Rush.
Rush, I'm sorry.
And I am frustrated too. Thank you very much.
Do you have other questions for the witness?
I acknowledge the revisions that you've made. But I, but, but I assimilate now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public who have questions for this witness? Mr. Miss Sarah, what, we're not obviously calling another witness. Who are your remaining witnesses?
I have Mr. Klein, my traffic expert. I have Mr. McDonough, the planner, and we have ultimately the engineer. I think Mr. Klein, we could hope, if you don't want to call a witness now.
I would say there is no prospect of finishing before eleven-thirty, and that would, I...
Okay, I guess.
I, it's not in the real world.
Okay, you're absolutely right. You've done this a long time, so I respect that, sure.
So I guess the question I have is, when are you presenting the civil engineer? Because they, and related to that, it's a report we have from the board's engineer is lengthy.
Yes.
And is, are, is he planning to revise the plans to address those comments before?
Well, yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we have gotten a sense tonight that we're on the right track. So I think, you know, so yes, we will be able to have our engineer now do the revisions and be prepared, hopefully, to testify at the next meeting if, in fact, you know, we get that far. So we would aim to get the, to get the revised engineering and the response to Neglia's memo ASAP.
Do you, okay, so between a civil engineer and a traffic engineer, I don't care who goes to the board.
Right.
I'm assuming it makes sense that they both testify before Mr. McDonough.
Usually, that's what we would do. We had Mr. McDonough standing by just in case we got that far tonight. But usually, he would hit cleanup, yes.
The, when do you think the engineering plans, we are badly backlogged. And I'm trying to figure out when to schedule you, and I want to make sure it's a date that's going to work and not push other people so often, then you say the plans aren't going to be ready.
Okay, can we take just about... Well, wait, hold on. Well, I know, that's why you want to go on the floor. Okay, all right, one second, Chair.
So I can do this without... I have urged several members of the new council to fill the two remaining alternate positions. So we have some flexibility of people coming, not coming. You know, it's, I know it's hard and things come up and whatever, but most of the pending variants is a due variance, and so we need seven people here. And the more flexibility they have, the more people will feel comfortable of this, you know, my kid's doing this, you know, all the wonderful things that happen in people's lives. Our new assistant, as you noticed, is very good at chasing after you and, you know, but I think, you know, she doesn't have to chase it. We have seven, eight people who already said yes, and so... But that's, you know, and hopefully, they will do that soon. We have added, so we now have two females, so I've also pointed out that we are well otherwise balanced. We don't have a good boy-girl that's skirt, I don't know, those officers. That members are more important, you know, total gender, but, you know, it is, different people have different perspectives and that's good.
Mr. Chairman, when, approximately forty-five days from now would be probably realistic? I think September fourth is probably realistic. Would our engineer time to do that?
We went over the list. We tended, we did things, but we also knew this was not going to be done. It was a sad disruption because we said we could work on that.
That'd be great.
So, members of the public, this application will be continued until September fourth, hopefully on the first floor, but definitely in this building. Meeting will start at seven-thirty. Whether we have some single families like we did tonight, we're not that far along to know, but a substantial part of the evening will be devoted to this application. There will be no further notice, so tell the people who were here, who left, that come back September fourth. Do you give us an extension of time?
We certainly do, Mr. Chairman.
That.
Thank you.
And, you know, and just for, again, for members of the public, plans will be, need to be here ten days in advance of September fourth, and they'll be posted on the website, or you can come in the planning office and look at them, whatever works best for you. And to finish up by saying, board, we unfortunately will need to meet twice in August. As part of the reason, I'm hoping to get some additional because, you know, everyone loves August meetings and... But, and we will need the two September meetings and so it's probably backlogged, but hopefully, we'll be close to being put up. Sarah, anything else we need to do? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Aye. I will be hot and sweaty that day just to see what. No, I'm going to take a softball, sort of, and I'll embarrass her for the whole day.
Yeah.
For you.
Thank you. I'm staying early to watch twenty-seven, my traditional, twenty-four, I think, September. I will definitely be hot and sweaty. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Sounds like what she says, I'm scared of things, so.
Yes, it's good to meet you.
I would chod drill up in these big black bag. Now I gotta carry two of these things.
He didn't take his sign.
They still mention it. Are you a member?
Meetings?
I got involved with something.
Hi, nice to meet you. Formally, I appreciate it.
But a condo can be a tenant. Yes, yes. Let's just see you. How are you? Jonathan was happy to see you.
And I was certainly was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he jumped up.
I think I had eighty objectors to my application and Clifton.
Were you there?
What was it?
Oh, because you guys rolled it together.
No, no, we just happened to roll up.
Oh, okay.
No, I have a storage facility. I'm on, I have four areas. I'm going to say it's going to take four more.
To get denied?
Well, they told us to lop a storey off today pretty much, so I don't know. Where is this? It's on forty-six, okay, which you would think that's a perfect location, but it's, the grade goes down and there's... Which you would think that's a perfect location, but it's, the grade goes down and there's, there's a, there's a farm there. There's a bunch of residences and the residents have all worked up and, you know, they got signs and, you know, all that shit.
Tricky. It's tricky over there. They have a good chair. I mean, it's only over there.
Yeah, he, 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 he's wheeled them in a bit now, so it's good. It was like mayhem the first meeting, but, uh, yeah, it's just gonna take.
You know what the self-storage is, it's, I mean, people object to them. They're quiet.